Couple of quick housekeeping notes. Ms. Pedro was unable to make it today because she's off on her honeymoon. I don't know. Weak excuse, I don't know. But we did originally have this meeting scheduled for next week. It got moved to this week, so she's off on her honeymoon. Good for her. We have with us today Senator Sebey who handles all of Portsmouth and a chunk of Bristol and Zerbita. And Representative Susan Donovan who handles Prudence Island and Bristol and a little swath of Portsmouth as well on the other side. So they will be here at the end if there's any state-related questions that you would like to ask. We'd have our open forum, item number six. They will be happy to answer any questions or take any comments and try and find out the answers for you if they don't know them. We are going to ask, or I'm going to ask, that we move new business two up to first. That is the discussion of the Prudence Island dock and parking. This is for the Bristol side. Bristol has been fortunate and we're going to figure out how they do this because they apparently have much better grant writers than we do because they get a lot of grants. They have been fortunate to get some funding to rebuild the north bulkhead. I'm going to steal all of your thunder, so why don't you actually... So can I have a motion to move the business two up?
The second is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. If you can speak loud, go for it, otherwise you can come into the microphone.
I can speak loud. Good afternoon. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Greg Marsillian, the harbor master. Sacrificial lamb today, come over to Bristol. I am the messenger. And also the harbor master in all things pertaining to the waterfront in Bristol. Everybody knows, we've been doing a lot of vibrant things over the waterfront. Just put the extension on our boardwalk, grants, 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 and now we've got the grant, approved, federal grant for fixing the north side of the Prudence Island ferry dock and the south side. Plus we're moving forward with the Marina expansion up to the south side of Church Street Dock. So we're going to be making some parking changes in the upcoming future. A lot of that is due to CRMC regulations. We need to own parking for the expanded Marina, but we still want to service the people of Prudence Island with their seasonal parking. Or, I'm sorry, their annual parking. So the construction of docks is going to begin in late, late winter, early spring. We'll start with the north side, not going to interrupt the ferry traffic at all. We'll still be running two lanes, in and out. But we're going to, at that point in March, we're going to move the current parking, the annual parking, for everybody that has a permit, over to Cross from Robin Rub. The council has agreed to this and the town administrator, plus we're going to, they're going to figure out a deduction of fees because, you know, we're not going to charge eight fifty because you've got to walk another five minutes. So we're going to adjust those fees accordingly. I don't know what they're going to be. You know, the council hasn't even talked about it yet as far as what that's going to be, but we'll know before then what it's going to be cheaper than the current rate of eight hundred and fifty dollars for anybody that has a permanent spot. We'll still maintain the snowplow on the dock, we'll maintain the snowplow in that lot over there as well. And I promise, because I do the snowplow, I will not hit your cars. To the best of my ability. You know? It's just the way, the way we're doing business over there now, we just need to increase our parking for the, really for the Marina. I mean, thirty-eight spots. I want to take questions at the end. So we need that. CRMC wants us to own that property for the parking. Russ Carrier has agreed to allow us to do your parking over there, moving forward. We have another four years left on that lease, and I'm sure the town's going to renew that lease at the end of that four years as well. What else I can tell you? The regular, the regular parking that we have on the street, that'd be this little lot that's supposed to be used for day parking, that's going to stay open again next year. You know, we rent that seasonally now. Russ kind of holds us hostage down there, he owns all those parking lots. And he does have an additional lot next to the one that's open, that he's not renting now, if anybody ever wanted to rent there. And he also has spots as well. So I'll take some questions. I don't want to tie anybody up. I think you were first.
What are you going to do with your, your, taking up daily parking spots? Are you going to open up other parking spots?
The daily parking?
Well, again, you're taking that spot that's across from Robin Rub, that's daily parking, and now you're filling it up with annual. Where does everybody have parking? That comes on a daily basis.
I'm not sure of that answer at this point. I know we're going to...
You're going to, you're going to need to, you're going to push another parking issue on us? Like the last time we had it with the person, right?
Potentially yes. I mean, I don't, I don't have all the answers. Again, messenger then.
It'd be good if you took that back and asked him. Where the additional parking comes from?
We're, we're well aware of the parking problem that we have in town, and I know that every time we turn around, there's more areas that have been knocked for overnight parking and et cetera around the town of Bristol. You know, but that's because people leave their cars in front of people's houses for weeks at a time and they get upset, so.
So we can be clear on which lots you're talking about? There's a small lot right on the corner directly across from the dock.
The small lot directly across from the dock is a seasonal parking lot that we rent from Russ Carrier.
Right.
And that's from May to October, April to October. November first, he puts the gates up, and that's that. The parking, the new annual parking will be right across from Robin Rub.
So that's the bigger lot that's...
The bigger lot.
So, that's where the annual parking on the dock now is going to be relocated?
Relocated.
And you're saying the smaller seasonal lot is going to be left open all year now?
No. No, just in November first.
Okay.
Is that the currently empty south lot across from Robin Rub, the one that he has barricaded off?
No, it's the current lot we rent.
Okay.
For somewhere around twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think Kurt just hit on it, but, so the half of that lot that the town rents right now will occupy, has enough space to fill permit holders that are on the dock?
So there's, we have thirty-four permitted holders on the Prudence Island ferry dock today.
Yep.
There's thirty-four spots on that lot across from Robin Rub.
All right, did you, or has gotten you, has the town talked to Russ about opening up so that it would be that whole section, so that maybe you've got the permit holders holding half and that other half could be used as being used right now?
I, I think Russ might want to do that. I'm not going to speak for Russ. I mean, certainly you guys can entertain a red nap, you know? I can tell you what we pay now, so like I said, it's almost twenty-three thousand dollars. I think the town's going to do that again. We just bought a lot on State Street that we used to rent, over across from, like Chris House Pizza and that whole, this whole lot. The town just bought that lot, so we're not renting that anymore. So that opened up some parking for the businesses. But you could probably reach out to Russ and see if you'd like to.
But at this time, the town's not entertaining the idea.
No.
So when you go back, you could tell them that you asked about that.
I'll talk to them.
Thank you.
Ross?
Another question, David.
So the, the move to the lot across from Robin Rub for the permit holders?
Yes.
Will start in March?
In March.
And is that a permanent move then?
It's going to be a permanent move. There'll be, the spaces will be numbered, just like you have now, same numbers. There, there's no burbs.
We're down to zero, we're down to zero park, you're telling me?
Yes.
On that daily lot? You took up thirty-four with the endless button. So you're, you're basically telling anybody that comes here on a daily basis, you have no parking in front, you have period all day?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. That's what...
You think that's a good solution?
That is a solution for now. Regardless of...
I will, I will guess, I'll ask our, our comm board to go and tell them it's not a good solution. It's the same problem we had last year, right? With the ferry with our, to whatever. It's a bad situation.
I can understand that.
And has that gone through the personal town council?
This is a parking plan that we put through back in June with them.
So there were an ordinance, which came in there?
That's not an order change yet. Regardless of fact, whatever transpires in the next six months, the, all those permanent spots on Prudence Island ferry docks, we're going to start construction in March, are going to move over there.
And they're, I'm just asking you, will the ordinance be in place? Because I'm going to go by what Chris just whispered here. Who leases that now?
We'll see. Now, that's, that's the great, the great part of the whole thing.
You're going to pay eight fifty, seven fifty, whatever the number is, I'm going to park in this spot.
It's just, it'll just be like it is now. The harbor department is making, going to start maintaining armed enforcement on all the waterfront lots. And those of you know, my guys are in there every day.
They are.
And bill ticket and they won't tell.
Until, until early September.
Until, well, this year they're staying on until mid-October. And then, and after that, then it falls upon me because I don't have the seasonal help all, all year long. And we're just going to keep maintaining it, and we're going to keep ticketing and towing. We'll take the same orders we have on play now on Prudence Island ferry lot to that lot to ticket and tow. Because the police department requires a twenty-four hour enforcement before they go to park on that.
So just so I'm clear, when you go through this permanent solution, take the permit, annual permit holders will be displaced across the street from where I'll get Robin Rub to free up those spaces for the Marina, for the Marina's building, right?
That's correct.
What about those short-term, one night, ten dollars parking, you spent nine months over it, is that off the table too? Like we had, so people coming for, if you used to be able to build, we had a ten dollar permit for a single overnight.
Yeah, we, we stopped that over a year ago. When we did the, the west side of the ferry dock, we stopped the, the daily parking because we had all the construction vehicles on it. People have been parking there, and I'll be honest with you, I haven't charged anybody in the last eighteen months of daily parking rate. I know, and I know islanders have been parking on in those spots that used to be open for that daily parking.
So longer for people, paying two hundred and sixty dollars for the circle.
Well, you always had your spot when you, when you pulled in the dock. If you didn't, we found a spot for you while we had the vehicle towed, if you showed up for the ferry to rent on dock. We always were able to move that out and find you a parking spot, as far as I know. Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know wenching deduces, but there is a parking lot there that's for rent. We are Prudence Island residents, travelers, county Portsmouth, so at some point, maybe the county Portsmouth, the council, the Prudence Commission, somebody should go to Russ and maybe rent it for, they could rent it for the people that come daily and come up with a game plan. I mean, I love the fact that we're out of Bristol, we all wanted to run out of Bristol, et cetera, I'm not going to bring up old. However, they have a right to have a Marina, they've done a lot of work, and they're stuck with parking too. Parking on the dock is a privilege and it's a very convenient way of traveling, but as long as the town's willing to provide an area that we can pull on the dock, unload, horse you around and get out and go park, I mean, it's out of our hands. I mean, the company that runs the ferry only leases sixty-five feet up from the west end, so it has nothing to do with the company, it's the town. And I think we need to work together, and yeah, it's going to be a change, and it's going to be long-term change, but, and nobody likes change.
No.
I would like to see the town council pursue that other half of the lot, but I don't know when to tell, make a motion, whatever.
Well, in the middle of all this, we, so we're from Robin Rub directly. This is an unpaved lot in the middle of the block. The Pope Street access has been chained off. We go between two houses to get into it. He's asking us not to do that so often. He paints lines on the grass and we have to haul everything we own across this paved and lined and empty lot to get to our mud patch, and nobody can get him. We would pay to park in that paved and lined and empty lot, and he has it blocked off because of some ongoing feud with Bristol, I believe. I, I don't know.
I'm not sure either. I've only been in the harbor for five years and I've, for that, I had a Coast Guard station, so that really predates me. I've always got along with Russ since, sorry, this job and my previous job. So I, I don't know, but I, I'll talk to Russ, I have a good rapport with him.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So in adopting this plan, parking plan, you said put forth when they adopted, did they give any consideration to where the people that are currently parking in those thirty-four spaces were going to go? Or you just ignored that? That lot is usually full. You're moving people.
The, the lot that we're moving people to?
Yeah, I mean, it's full, probably full today.
With daily travelers.
With daily travelers.
Right. When you redid the plan, did you give any consideration at all to where people parking in this full lot were going to go? Or have you just decided they would disappear because you had decided you wanted to use the lot for something else?
I'm not sure of how they thought, their thought pattern on it.
Yeah, well, at some point they decided that because they moved them up. People to go. The lot's full, I mean, you're there.
The, the lot's generally, generally full, not all the time. I used to count a park, I used to have to count the cars every day. I used to count the cars three times a day.
But it's, it's generally full.
Yeah, May, June.
It's not empty.
July. Yeah. It's not empty today, no.
No, I mean, it's not empty most of the...
Most, about seventy, eighty years empty.
Yeah, but that's, people, I mean, but the summary is where the problem is. I mean, it's not hard to find parking.
Well, I, which, because you have your council here today, you can discuss that with them. I, I don't have an answer for you. I can't speak on behalf of the Bristol Town Council and what their thought process was. You know, we, we had, we were moving forward with the Marina expansion. That benefits us, you know, monetarily. We've had a great relationship, right, and think we'll move forward when we, these are the little hiccups. We have plenty of time to decide where the daily parking is going to be. Yes, sir.
Well, we're not getting any younger, what about handicap parking?
Well, the two... The two handicap spots that are on the Prudence Island ferry lot will stay because they're mandated by state law.
Two for thirty-four.
Two for thirty-four.
So you're going to have competition for those now too? Because the Marina parking is going to have the same issue.
Yeah. But, I mean, who grabs it first, grabs it first. I mean, most of the time it's the same couple of cars that...
It's that park guy.
I, I understand that too, but Bristol, Bristol enforcement, killing messenger, I, I, I don't. I had them over the plan, I gave them a plan, they looked through the plan, they put their plan together, and this is the message I'm bringing that I can.
So I hope the town council understands that every time we have an issue, it's Bristol's screwing the, the Prudence Island residents, and no one, none of you guys have addressed it. Sorry to throw you all on the intercom at one point, but it has not been addressed. You tried, but there has to be some better way to do it. If you have to have a bigger thumb, you have to have some grants or whatever, something has to happen. If not, then why are we residents of Portsmouth? I mean, really? I'd be better off to be a resident of Bristol and get a parking sticker. And it's probably, tax rates probably...
Is there any consideration for overnight parking for visitors?
No, no. No.
Don't even have day parking for day visitors.
Right. So basically, they've thrown, Bristol has thrown us a plug in on our intercom.
Excuse me. Well, look, you, the, when you guys had the trailer when you were collecting fees behind the, the building, is that city property, is that town property?
The town owns that property, but it's not going to be a park lot. That, that property was bought with open space money, open space money. You can put a couple of spots there if you were putting a park in, but no, that won't be, won't be a parking lot. I know this, and I deal with the fishermen all the time. They play the part there as well. I like to build docks there. You guys all saw that. I, I'm not building docks there anymore either, so I've been displaced. I'm, I'm, I'm feeling just as bad as you guys are. I'm just, it's time to down there, and I have a truck that belongs to the town of Bristol, a lot of places to park. You know?
You can park anywhere in the back of the area.
Well...
Okay.
Not all the time.
Ninety-nine point nine.
But they, it's, it's an issue. We know parking's an issue with the walk-in. You know? And people in Bristol will say it's not a parking issue, it's a walk-in issue. You know, for what that's worth. Anybody else got any questions? I'll bring these concerns back. We, we'll talk about it. I'm, I'm sure the town council chairman will talk to our town council chairman and the town manager and the town administrator. I'm sure they'll get together and they'll, they'll discuss this further.
Well, I can tell you that if past experience is any indication of what we can expect in the future, we're screwed. It's as simple as that, because when the dock was under renovation and all of this parking issue came up at that time, and it was the case of, this is Bristol, this is Portsmouth, oh, it's that bastard Russ Carrier, you know, and it was none of the above, it was just the fact that all of the collective parties did not, or were not willing to get together and come to some equitable solution that ultimately meant money. And that's the bottom line. And I see this coming back absolutely full circle, except this time it's not a temporary situation. We're talking about long-term, permanent decisions being made here. At some point in time, our council and their council are going to have to get together and figure something out. That's just my own personal opinion, but it did not work so well, and we went through this a couple of years ago.
I would like to thank the harbor master for having an elegant facility where we can get out of the rain.
Amen to that.
And experience comfort, and it's really made waiting for the boat much nicer experience.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Serious applause.
You could purchase the parking spots if you have it.
That's a historic building. It's not coming down. They tried that in Bristol already, they're not going to go with that. It's not going to happen. So, if you guys got concerns, stop, please stop seeing me at the office, you know, we can chat about this. I, I don't have all the answers. You can always email Steve Ketteteg, run the town website, this is his email address. You know?
I think we've been down that road too.
It's government.
Yeah, it is.
We're getting my entire thought line. I understand.
I'll ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Where's the sta, what, and you may not know the answer, what is the status of that new building, I think the building next to, which changed its name ten times, but Gili is, the lot is?
The State Street?
Yeah.
Right now, someone had filed a appeal on the decision of the, it was the historic mission, disoring, planning. There's another meeting next week to discuss that. I think there's a sign up there, and discussing that, but I, I don't know.
Because that's another fifty, sixty, seventy spaces gone.
He's putting parking in for his residents and the restaurant, as far as I know, when I, when I had that one a few years ago, but I don't, because I have to stack what we have to the Marina park. So that was my concern, was every time we opened a new business down there, there was no parking for employees or, or visitors, so. But I said, we have to, I, we've been looking into it for a while, Steve, get back to you guys, get some of that.
I have one more question. Laying back the grant, how did you guys get the grant? Who initiated it?
For the Prudence Island ferry dock.
I guess, or they would call it probably the Bristol Marina Dock now, but...
Could be. The sign says, says Prudence Island Ferry Dock, don't... The Diane Williamson initiated through a federal transportation grant. She's a town planner or development director. So that, she, she put it through it, we had some help with the center's office, you know, that, that period's falling apart. We bought something that was young, and it's costing a lot of money. We partnered with enforcement and the ferry company, and Bristol fixed the west end to get all that, get that done and front it forever. I know that, it was a lot of hardship. But we got that done, and this is the next step, is to get that north side done. It's falling apart, it keeps me up at night. You know, I, I was telling Pat yesterday, I've been letting the fishermen put the traps there because it prevents people from parking all the way on that edge. There's, there's big holes there. You know, we, I pulled a kid out of there three years ago, that was, that was playing down in there because his parents weren't paying attention. You know, crawling down inside, down by the, the bottom of the timbers. I, you know what I mean? So we filled the holes, we sandbagged, filled them, sandbagged. The fishermen said, hey, can we put some traps there? It's a beautiful idea. Right? Nobody can park there then, on top of that stuff, so. But, you know, we're going to try, we're going to really, we really have great parts to go on, we'll, we'll figure all this stuff out.
I don't know if there's a way to, to, most, the flow in the parking lot usually is sort of in one side and out the other, but it's not actually labeled that way. So there are a lot of people that are like looking for parking, they somehow don't see the signs that it's permit parking?
Yeah.
And they drive in the other way, and it's nothing like doing a, okay, like there's no way to pass.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're going to make it a one-way route and how the, how the flow is going to work when it's Marina parking and people are looking for the ferry.
Once that north side's done, we'll be all the way, all the way to the wall. You know, so in, in, in my vision, you know, and hopefully they go with mine, we'll line up the cars right along that, the northernmost wall. You know, two lanes, and, you know, we'll have that, the outbound lane to go off, you know, in, in a place to drop, drop stuff off.
But I don't know if they can label that, because people think it's just two entrances.
No.
It's often for the sign.
Yeah, I think once we, once we repave it, we can do that, as far as put some arrows down, put some signs up. You know, I, you know, it's the funniest thing, we've got a thousand signs in that lot, people still don't get it.
Oh, yeah. I see people.
Yes, sir.
This isn't going to help your parking problems, but it's only by one space. There is a space where a car is generally parked between the entrance and the exit to the Prudence Ferry Dock. It makes it virtually impossible to see what you're doing when you try to get in or get out. You may want to consider moving that one spot.
All, all the way down. Yeah, we, I had, I had put a motorcycle sign up there this past spring, you know, motorcycle parking only, and that disappeared.
So it was...
I'm sure it is, you know? I spent a lot of money on the sign, so my sign budget got depleted. But yeah, no, I had a motorcycle parking only just because, you know, we had a few residents with motorcycles, but that, that...
I'm not trying to hold you up, but has this job gone out for the, the ferry dock?
Diane Williamson is working with the state right now, because we want them to, to process the grant stuff for us, but we should be going out to bid very shortly for that, for the, the dock structure. But it won't begin until late winter, because, you know, getting too late now. Construction season is closing rapidly. Unfortunately.
Yes, sir. So it sounds like the largest single problem is the lack of day parking. How many, how many parking spots would be needed to accommodate people who need to do day parking?
Day parking?
Yeah.
That lot's probably half full, so you're probably looking, twenty spots?
Twenty spots year-round, about thirty-five some.
So...
Plus the ten, plus the ten they've been using in the center.
Yeah, and there's been a lot of fishermen parking in there.
Yeah.
It's no concern, but for people who actually have access to Prudence on a daily basis...
You probably want to get like thirty, about thirty-five, thirty-six spots. And, and I know for a fact that lot is thirty-six spots, next to a thirty-four spot.
The one that's closed.
The one that's... A counter.
That's the thing, you don't have to walk across the line to get to it.
Exactly.
You know? So. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Where do you think the thirty-four people who are being displaced will park?
I, I, I think they'll park like they do now, anywhere all over town. You know? You know, I think that, that'll be the result of that, you know.
And that generally leads to more signs going up. It's about, it's about four lots. Three to one, person will be in that.
There's something on the car.
Oh, yeah, that's good, that control is designed.
Oh, yeah, well, we're, we just keep it tight.
You're safer now.
We love signs. You can't go anywhere without getting lost.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Since you're taking ideas, and I just had a little one.
Yeah.
What about the parking that's near Sierra and Ace Hardware and having a shuttle guller like that on ferry times?
They had that when we first did the dock.
Did you talk about that?
We talked about running Roger Williams Shuttle because they run around town. And trying to do something with the universities and adapt, pick up spots because there is, right where Laurie was saying by Dunkin' Donuts right around the corner is commuter parking actually, I believe that corner.
Yeah, makes it a park.
Yeah, by the fire station. And that is an idea that I'm sure will come up. But Roger Williams already has a shuttle, so we might be able to work something out where, you know, I'm back thinking, the town of Portsmouth should probably chip in to have an agreement with the university to run something like that.
Greg, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. If you guys need anything, please, as always, stop by, see me for their money and time, sometimes Saturdays. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll start at the top of the order. We're going to update you on number one, which is an update for the public safety officers. Chief Lee.
Good afternoon. I am going to update you on our public safety staffing. Unfortunately, last year, I was at a wedding in Florida, and I was not at this meeting. And I don't know if, if not the right information got out, but we were putting on a reserve police officer. Joe Tappanay, he's sitting in the back of the row. It was a lengthy process to get Joe approved. Not from our side, but we have the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust, basically the town's insurance company. They have requirements. If I have somebody wearing a badge that says Portsmouth on it, carrying a firearm, they put a lot of requirements on, including attendance at the municipal police academy, even though Joe's been a police officer. How long, Joe? Twenty-eight years or so?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thirty-six. You're almost up under my league.
Just one more academy.
So Joe had to go through the academy. There were all different requirements. He couldn't have been retired more than three years. Again, it's our insurance company. We're not putting someone out on the street unless we have those requirements. So it did go into a larger process than we thought, but Joe has been appointed and is out on the street doing shifts. Now Glenn's had some issues, and I don't want to discuss someone's private issues at a public meetings and personnel issues, but Glenn's got some issues he's been dealing with, very challenging issues. We do have coverage. We haven't lost coverage. We do cover when Glenn's off with Joe. Joe was appointed as a reserve, which is different than a full-time officer. Full-time or part-time, which is also different, has to be approved. It's a separate position going in the budget. When you look at the budget, there's a line item that says overtime temp. That, on Prudence Island, public safety, that is where the money for Joe and the council did appropriate some money for Joe. Now, it's not quite as much as I asked, but it was a tough budget here, and our town administrator struggled with trying to make those budget numbers go. Unfortunately, that did not get as much as I wanted in there. But we're not going to forget about Prudence Island, and we are going to have coverage. And I will move some money within my own budget to make sure we have some money, and Joe's been out doing shifts, and hopefully, you know, some of the folks have got to see him while he's out there. So I just want to make, make that clear. Again, my deputy was retired, but it was always going to be a reserve officer. It's my plan. I'm the chief. This is the plan. Now, someone else had asked me about our response. Those two Portsmouth police boats, on weekends, we have two boats out on busy weekends. We have one boat out at the Harbor Master every day from Memorial Day through Labor Day, the police boats out. That's our primary response. That boat will come here. We also have, the Bristol Police Department has a brand-new boat. We have a mutual aid agreement with Bristol. They've been here twice, actually. So those police officers in Bristol will come here, just like if they had something going, we're all tied up, we go to Bristol. Now, in terms of Prudence Island, we did have a traffic study that was discussed last year, and I don't know how that information didn't get posted, but Fred reminded me actually that we had promised that at the last meeting when I wasn't here, and we did do another traffic study. The average speed of the vehicles, eighty-five percentile is what we look for. We did make the eighty-five percentile. I wish I could do that in Portsmouth when we do a traffic study because we never make eighty-five in Portsmouth. I'm not saying everyone drove, I know some people speed, but most people at the eighty-five percentile were adhering to the speed limit, which is what I want to see. And any traffic engineer wants to see that. That means we are compliant generally, and we know that some people do speed. So I want to make that clear that we did get that done. We went about twenty days with that. You guys saw the message board up on our hands. That's how we do it. That's actually a computer. It's a radar. It's a number of things. It's a great tool. We get requests to have it everywhere. We have two of them. Unfortunately, the one over in Portsmouth broke, and I had to bring that one back over there for now because school was opening up. It is up on West Main Road doing the same thing right now that it did over here. So those are great tools. I know we like it over here. It does have an effect on drivers just by the flashing light. It does have a traffic counting effect. That's another reason I like to do it. Just putting the signboard out there will slow traffic. So we do like to use it. We like to use it all over town. They're expensive items. I don't know, we spent maybe fifteen thousand dollars for that a couple of years ago. President might remember how much it was, but it's an expensive item. In terms of, someone asked me to mention about crime on the island, but this is one of the safest summers we've had. There's only been ten police reports. There were two arrests. We did twenty-three citations. We had twenty-nine calls for service, for police service, and there were two hundred and fifty-four police initiated activities. That might mean just, I'm down, meet the ferry or whatever it is, where Glenn or Joe was doing a shift, we called off on. So this was probably the safest summer in, after eight years. This is the lowest year to date, fewest responses and calls for that. So overall, it's been a straight summer. I tell those all the time, Portsmouth, one of the safest communities in Rhode Island. Two thousand and fifteen, we were the safest. Prudence Island's even safer. The Chiefs on Equidna Island always joke with me, they wish we had our primary. We're up in competition for the top with New Shoreham, which is Hog Island, in Portsmouth and Foster. I mean, we're in a very safe community here, and I think sometimes we don't realize that, how safe it actually is. But I'll tell you, whether it's Prudence Island or over the mainland, speeding cars are number one complaint. So we, we realize that, and I want to speak to Joe and Glenn and make sure they're out there doing some enforcement. And also get back into the habit of being there when the ferry's coming in. I agree with some of the residents that have called me and let me know that that's a, that's a primary responsibility for the police, and we should be there. So we're going to make sure that that goes going forward. Does anyone have any questions for public safety? Yes?
I have a question about your response boat. How many officers are okay to run that boat?
That's a good question, Pat. There's four that can actually operate that boat, but I'm comfortable saying they're operators. Eight people have gone through the training, four we let take it out. The other ones need more time on the water, actually. It's more, and it's training time. You ask how comfortable, it's training time. Get in them to get on the water and get comfortable with it. Everybody goes through the Coast Guard cast. Everybody in Portsmouth takes a turn trying to write, operate the boat. Four guys can actually, I'm comfortable, half of them respawed. Then like I said, four more have also passed, have passed the Coast Guard, Coast training, so we're going to stop getting those guys in. Yes?
I don't remember whether it was you as chief or the one before you, so excuse me if I repeat myself. But we had incidents where, because I was in EMT at the time, where we needed police over here. We didn't have one. It was an overdose or restraining situation, and I needed help, and I needed police. Well, they couldn't find the key to the boat. The Harbor Master was out of town. He deserves to go on vacation, et cetera. So a chain of events happened, and it was a bad scene. We took care of it. Then that was brought to you.
Yeah. From now on, from back in those, for the last three years, we have the fire take us over if there's any issues. So, yeah, that's, that's been addressed. That wasn't, that was before me.
Right, and one of the things that came up was that we were told that there would be one officer on a ship that would be trained to run the boat. They would know where the keys are. They do know how to, so that there is always somebody, a police officer, that could respond. You got fired, you got mutual aid out there on a fire. They might not have anyone that can bring you this way. You might want to think about putting in more of a marine program where you do do, you know, you must, I don't know how your ships go. There has to be some way to make sure we have somebody that can jump in the boat. I am not the person that says I need a cop here all the time. I don't.
We've had a ton of turnover, Pat, and we've got a ton of young officers. And that's part of the issue is getting these young officers up and going. A lot of the guys, Tony Kimbrola, A.J. Gucci, Brian Peter. Everyone I'm naming was a former officer that took the boat out, and some of them have served as Harbor Masters. Scott Travis, all these guys, right? They're all retired. Billy, I can't just think of how many that took the boat out that are gone now. So we have all these young officers that have come in, and it's going to be a training issue to get them up and going, not just take the course. You have to, as you know, you have to go out and operate that craft and get used to it. And we have two different boats. We still have the park. The parkers actually, they find it, for whatever reason, they find it easier to use the older boat. They can, more and more of them can take that older boat out.
Well, maybe you should discuss with the harbor management committee, and maybe you could get some kind of train. They have, you have a lot of experience with retired Navy people there. You might be able to get some free training and come up with a program that still they have to go through, pass. But as you know, I'm on that committee, and you have some gentlemen there that really would give the time, and you might be able to get some training that way for you guys.
That's a good idea.
Just an idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Really need to have more people able to get the people here. You can't just rely on the fire department. I'm sure the fire department will help you whenever they can, but they get strapped at times too.
Thanks, Beth. Yes, sir.
Someone unrelated to this, and this may not be your daily work, but I believe it's a legal issue. We have a major problem down at the ferry dock. We have cars down there, some have been there for several years. My understanding is it's an abandoned vehicle lot in Portsmouth. We have cars down there that are registration two or three years old. They need to go. We have a parking rule that says three, three-week parking. Nobody's enforcing that. We have another place that says live parking. There are cars parked there during the day. Well, if the live person is in there, they're in the trunk. I just think, while, while, while the officers are down there, they should be looking at this, and we should be citing, and we should be towing.
Well, they are going to tow that, you know, the green van down there?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sick of seeing that, and today I went down there and said, Glenn, it's gone. So that thing will be towed. We do have to follow a process, and I think it's a two-week notice. I told Glenn what to do and how to do it. We're taking the green van that says tow me out. So that'll be something anyhow. Glenn, how many places have you guys been monitoring Joe?
This last time we had the message board, we did one location in one direction. Previous time, we did one location in two directions.
Just one row?
Just never, yes, it was the last time, yeah. Which row do, dear, which row did you want us to check?
I don't care what he's speaking. Well, popping on, I mean, people, he was saying they're day in and day out, and hopefully they slow down.
Yeah.
But then they make up a little time and some plays out.
In addition to the sign, we will take up a traffic post with the radar and park all over the island and monitor speed and make traffic stops. So we leave it up.
But if you have, I certainly get a complaint, let Glenn or Joe know where they're speeding. And I know it's been somebody on the side. I know I've been over the other side of the island where they, they do drive pretty quickly too. And it's not just the new cave road. Yes, sir.
I'm pretty familiar with police operations. I volunteered as a reserve officer from Iton for about fifteen years. And how confident are you that you will get funds in your budget to keep some visibility? You know, and I know, being visible is a big deterrent. Boat time, obviously, the biggest distraction. I've seen a lot of people riding around in the back of pickups. I mean, there are kids riding without helmets and so forth. You know, but how confident are you are? Are you that you will get the funds you need to be able to have the job done properly?
Well, these folks sitting right here. I'm sure they hear this, and they hear public safety. You know, I think they've, they've heard it. That's all I can say on that. We, I will put, when that budget goes through next year, I will ask again for the, for the funds for here. And I'll ask for some extra for, extra patrols like we do on the mainland too, for speeding patrols. We'll put that in, and we'll have the council discuss it, but that's a good suggestion. I mean, these folks, that might buy you. Yes, sir.
How many days do we actually have a policeman on duty?
Well, patrolling, four days. Four days.
How many hours is that?
Forty, forty. Well, that's Glenn or Joe. Joe actually, we had, actually, it was five days for the summer. You were doing what, Thursday, you were doing an extra day, Joe? So we did have, just, that's for the summer. That's not for the whole year. We had an extra, we had extra patrols out before the July, we always do, an extra officer robot. Any major holiday, we have an extra officer robot, and then that goes through the whole, those whole weekends for the extra offices. But I generally, during, you know, as we go through September now, it would be four.
So it's just a matter of money that we don't have a police investigation, so we can.
It would be matter of money, yes, sir.
On mainland, it doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen mainland, though. But again, when I read through the numbers, it's not like we have a huge price for our, we don't want to say that nothing's ever going to happen because you know it can happen anywhere. We had a major incident on Hog Island a few weeks ago. I'm trying to deal with Prudence right now. Hog Island is even, we have no vehicles, no nothing, no street signs. And trying to get there with an emergency and getting multiple offices over there was a challenge. So that's something I've met with the town administrator, and we're dealing with, on that in terms of response. We have much better response here. Look at Daco Palooza. Now, we were out there with our two patrol boats, call for mutual aid, Rhode Island State Police, DEA, Bristol, all came out. We did wind up, after the festival, making an arrest on one of the boats for a domestic incident. Which is always tough when you make an arrest on a boat, and everyone's been drinking, right? We're going from our boat to the other boat to take the person and try and get him off it, and I'm going in the drink, safely.
So is it safe to say that Prudence Island is probably the only place in Rhode Island that has a policeman seven days a week?
Is it safe to say that?
Yeah.
No, no. Hog Island, many of the towns, many of our small towns don't need a service, and have no overnight coverage. They rely on the state police or mutual aid, and the state, you know, they might be, I hate to say, I don't want to, want to publicly say it, how many few troopers are running overnight shift for the whole state? Yes, ma'am.
At this meeting last year, and I understand you weren't there, we did indicate that one of our biggest things we need most is really visibility. I think we had less visibility at the ferry this year than we've ever had. And, and I think we're seeing a real influx in people who are not familiar with Prudence Island, they're not even from Rhode Island. And I think that it's important to make sure that when they come here, that they know it's not the Wild West. I was glad to see the sign here for a while. I think the, I live on the American Center Avenue, so I, you know, and I see the, the people that, that slow down, and then by the time they're by my house, they're back at forty miles, they're easily doing forty miles an hour. It, you know, so I'd say, I'm glad to see the efforts in that direction. I just think it needs to be, you can have, you need the sign, and they need somebody, you know, two hundred down, two hundred yards down beyond the sign going, okay, you slow down for the sign, you know, and, and move it around. Because people do, they know that's where it is, and so they'll slow down, and then, you know, they just, it needs to be, it's supposed to be twenty miles an hour. We've got a beautiful road. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And, and it's good for biking, and it's good for walking, and, but, but we just, we need to make sure they keep the speed down.
Yeah, and we will get the sign back, back over. We're getting the Portsmouth one here. Again, they're, they're computers, actually. They're very tricky items, and both of them have, at times gone down and not worked.
That, that alone won't do it because people, you know, you sort of need, you need the physical backup to say, somebody's looking at your speed, not just.
Not just, yeah, no, I agree with it. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes, thinking about service response times. You indicated that, especially in the summertime, you've got somebody on the water pretty much all the time. On my concern, and you've got the mutual aid with Bristol. I would assume, first of all, if your boat happens to be over on Sycanet Riverside, you would call the mutual aid assistance, obviously, because you're a long haul. What is your own service level commitment to getting an officer here if one is called upon? And I realize it's a commitment. It's not an obligation, but what, what's your ideal time, turnaround?
Well, ideally, it depends on the nature of the call. Is it an emergency? I mean, that's the primary thing. Is it an emergency?
Take the worst case. Take the worst case. Assume it's the worst case.
Yeah, priority one, worst case, we try to be over here under ten minutes, and that's covered from the other side.
That's, that's, that's pretty significant.
If you rode that boat with E, with E's on, he could beat that time.
Oh, yeah.
Because he, that new boat.
We saw you coming this morning.
And I was telling, I was talking to E, he brought me over. He had a little speed going. That boat can, that boat can travel, and that's, that boat, as you know, has, I'm a big fan of that. I'm so glad that the council approved that a couple of years ago. And all the people in the island appreciate having a nice patrol boat for us. And that is, as you know, that's our primary means of getting. And that is, as you know, that's our primary means of getting people over here, and for your safety on this island. Anything else? I know we got a busy agenda, I don't wanna tie up too much for everyone's time. I already made it over a couple of times this year. You can always call, and I'll come over here, I'll meet you at your house, all right? If there's some issue you wanna speak to me about, I'll come over.
I'm just looking for an excuse to go for a ride in the boat.
I wanna get on the police boat. Thank you very much, folks. I would request that one of you who are here year-round do that in January, so you can... I don't think he's gonna jump on the boat real quick with Steve then.
Okay.
Uh, next up, we have new business number one.
I'm sorry, for just a sec, sure. Under the topic of old business, there's an open item that I'm gonna want to address. You wanna do it now, or if you answer open queue?
Add, we add over to an index, it's not technically on the agenda. All right? About, I don't know, half one year before I sent the email, two months ago?
I'm sorry, what?
About two months ago, we were informed that there's been some issues on the island. So we have asked National Grid, Jacque is here, to enlighten us on to how and what the timeframe may be that National Grid will be able to make some repairs, create a better grid here on the island itself.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Michelle Fontz, I'm the National Grid's meeting customer manager. What that means is that is liaison for municipalities, whether it's gas, electric, to either respond to any projects, issues, whatever may be. So I cover the Eastway and the Clinic Bottom area. I've been in the company for twelve years, four years being in this position as a community customer manager. So, I believe, as was mentioned a short time ago, that there were some recent liability issues. Pretty much, I believe it was around midsummer, July, here on the island. To kind of just go back a little bit, Prudence Island is fed, it's on a thirty-six W forty-four feeder. That line is fed from the Dexter Street Substation on the mainland. That line is approximately forty-two, forty-three miles long. Twelve of those miles are on the island. That line comes up on Roberta, three-phase, goes up Narragansett. And three-phase, pretty much, is those three lines you see on the very top of the poles. So nine miles is about three-phase, and the other, nine miles is three-phase, and about three miles is single-phase, which is just the single lines that you will see in certain areas, and especially on the northern part of the island, which I believe is where a lot of these reliability issues were occurring this past summer. So it was around early July that I received, the first was from town administrator, town administrator Mr. Rayner, the concern about liability issues, State Constituent's Office, and also the Division, that liability issues going on in the island. From there, I spoke to Engineering, Design, Operations. They pretty much assessed the situation. What they were able to quickly do was, right on Narragansett, we have actually a capacitor bank, and also on the very top, the northern part of the island is not a capacitor. That typically maintains the voltage. It kind of helps towards the end of the feeders to kind of maintain that level of voltage. So they quickly went out and looked at those two devices, and made some adjustments. Pretty much, those are now kind of monitoring the voltage, making sure that it stays at that, either four KV level that it has to be on the area. So they were able to quickly, in mid to end of July, respond and check those two devices. More of the long-term solution, which actually, to the credit of Operations, Engineering, and Design, they were able to actually do a quick turnaround. We're doing a step above that. We're actually gonna install what's called a voltage regulator on the northern part of the island.
What was it, what were you talking about?
On Daniels, I believe it's pole five on Daniels.
You're not talking about the northern part, yeah. You are a little bit northern, but not very northern.
But it's all, it's, it's all connected, and it's all right there. But, good question. But, so, the step above that is installing a voltage regulator on that pole, on that portion, which will then help really truly maintain the voltage on the northern part of the island. What that does, it takes in the primary voltage, it senses if it goes below, it reads it above, and then it increases it so it adjusts, so it adjusts as needed as the, as the voltage lowers. There was a pole replaced this past Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was that pole five on Daniels. So that was done this past week. The voltage regulator will be installed this upcoming, and then it'll be online. Now, the time...
It's coming, this coming week?
This upcoming week, they're gonna be installing that voltage regulator. So, big credit to Operations, Engineering, Design, they're not here, but they're able to do a very quick turnaround on that. The timing of that is great, because it was a quick turnaround, but at the same time, we're now starting to get to the point of the season where a lot, the number of residents and the load on the island are gonna start to go down. So, are we gonna see the same issues? Hopefully not, should not be here. It may take another season to see if that will do the permanent solution to the issues on the northern part of the island. One of the things I just wanna stress is, number one, if you have any power issues, flickering lights, low voltage, please call it into our eight-hundred number, our eight-hundred number, that's eight-hundred-three-two-two-three-two-two-three. It's also another number, eight-hundred-four-six-five-one-two-one-two. By calling it into those numbers is an official record of an issue at your address and your account. So, so please, definitely reach out to town officials as need be. If you're not getting any attention or seeing any results, please call it into those numbers. There'll be a record of the issue, and then the engineers have more information, more data points to really see the timing of the date, the year, as issues come up, so they can better come up with different solutions. So, I'm hoping, and I'm confident, that the capacitor bank visits that operations were able to conduct in July helped. The voltage regulator that's gonna be installed next week is also gonna help further that issue of the low voltage on the northern part of the island. But we'll have to kind of wait and see as the season picks up again next year to see if we have the same issues. If they do, if they come up, please call it in. Yes, sir.
You remember that issue, we had this hot spell on the island you're talking about, where we have major problems with the voltage. I talked to all the National Grid guys on the island. They told me that the voltage at the highway problem was one-on-seven. They told me also that from the bottom of Dean Laveling, out north, we're talking north, not Jayden Laveling.
Right.
North, that would be north. North is outward on the neck, we'll say, okay? If you go out there, you go by the transfer station, you look out into the creek, and see a telephone pole like that angle, and once that baby goes, we're gonna be out of power for a long time. But, one of the things I want to make clear is that, I talk to these National Grid guys every once in a while, and they all know what's going on over here. They all know what needs to be done as far as upgrading. That same day, that guy told me that we needed a three-phase system from the bottom of Dean Laveling out to the north end of the neck. They know that, and you guys must know this, because they know it. You know, when you come out and you, you, you calculate people's usage for the month, is there a way that you can take voltage when they come out to do that, so you'll know what's going on?
It's, it's no secret, no. We pretty much know what's going on. I think the system, as old as it is, when the houses were built, there were no ACs, the loads were kind of low, and now everybody has one or two or three air conditioners. A lot has changed throughout the years. Those capacitor banks are not new. They've been out here for a few years. So, the issue on the island, to a certain degree, it's been going on for a while. Is it getting worse? I think we hit a point this season that it did get worse with the maintenance on the capacitor bank, the capacitors, with the installation of the voltage regulator. Our engineer feels that that's gonna fix the solution as of right now. Is that gonna be a permanent solution? We're gonna have to wait and see if the issue remains and other things that are gonna have to happen, that may happen. Will that mean upgrading that single-phase line on the northern part to three-phase? It could be, but for right now, those are the steps that were taken by the engineer. Now, the location of that, of the pole five Daniels, if I'm not mistaken, that's towards the end of the three-phase. So that's where they installed, they're gonna install that regulator, that voltage regulator. So that will help maintain that whole northern piece, that single phase going further up the island.
So what do we do about the poles? It looks like they're gonna fall over, will they fall over?
They were engineering that. Has the permitting gone through? Last I heard, it was eleven calling on that.
For that pole?
Yeah, it's not one pole, it's some rail now, and one of them's tethered up, but it is the power line that's holding.
That's not the one that goes through the marsh?
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah, okay, so...
No, they know about it, and it is a permitting thing.
So Brian, Brian took me around, I talked to Operations and so forth, and that's something that they have in mind, absolutely. Now, do we have a permanent plan, a solution, or, or design? Not that I'm aware of, but again, it's, this is the first time, this is the first time, at least on the island, my four years, that I've heard there's an issue. So it's on my radar, everybody hears my contact information. Specifically to the reliability issue, the steps that we've taken, and we're gonna take next week, that will help. Now, I've seen some other poles, not only on the northern part, and other areas that are very thin, and it's something where I have some concerns in other areas. So I'll be having further conversations with Designer, Engineers, and Operations. And just that pole line, for them, I don't even know how we would replace it, to be honest, if it, if it go down. I don't even know. And I think that's, so I'm starting to ask the questions, that's a state road. Where can we install poles, how can we get out there? So I'm asking a lot of questions. A lot of the local guys, they're more familiar than I am, because they've been out for a long time.
They said they have these mats, because they can put these swamp mats out there, they drive equipment right out there.
Yeah, I haven't seen that, but again, I'm sure high tide, low tide after a storm, to get out there, there'd definitely be some issues. But, but, so that's... Sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. All right, you got a problem, fix it. There's ways to fix it. I'm not gonna tell you how to fix them, your guys know how to fix them. My question is, I leave for six weeks, every winter, and go down. It used to be North Carolina, but it's where I go now. But while I'm away, my house is up there, I got the furnace going, of course, it's March when I'm out of here, et cetera. Those poles go down, I'm gonna lose everything on my farm. There's not gonna be any electricity, who's liable? It's not like you guys don't know if there's a problem, because it's been reported for the last five years. It is documented. So, my question, is that so, is it liable for my house?
If it's, if it's related to an emergency event or whatever events, my understanding is that we're not.
Okay.
But at, but at the same time, I'm, I'm, I know a little, I'm learning a lot more, so I've been taking a lot of these back to Operations.
I was told that it was in permanent process to go around the road and back up. That's...
I, that was one of the first questions.
Harker, gentleman, the blessing, Harker.
Harker, he is, if that's the same person, that's the operations manager. I don't wanna speak for him, but he's actually one of the ones that really pushed to get, guys, obviously, the capacitor banks for the pole top regulator, voltage regulator, and also another thing I'm gonna update in a minute. He's actually been a big proponent on making sure that we have the right reliability response and coverage for the island.
Have you seen those poles?
Oh, yes. Now, and I saw those, and I was like, do we have a road there? And I was told, nope, that's a marsh. So, that's something else, keep me up at night.
I know one of the things you were talking about as far as response, emergency response times, was provisioning a line truck here on the island, permanently, how was that working?
You're stealing my thought, you're stealing my...
Oh, never mind.
So, yeah, so, so one of the things that we're also doing, and again, this is credit to Operations, mostly Operations on this one, for better response, they're actually building a truck so for the island, which we're gonna keep on the island, which will really help. It's not, it's gonna be a smaller truck, but it's still gonna be able to do the work that they need out here to be able to respond a little bit faster. We're working out the location where we're gonna keep that, that truck. We're also working with, with town officials, and mainly the DPW sites, actually store some equipment, some poles, and maybe some transformers on the DPW sites. We, it's just, we're able to respond a little bit faster during emergency, during an event. So, we're working on that right now. The truck's being built, so it's not ready yet, maybe a few months, but at the same time, that is something that I think is gonna be really helpful to all the residents, and just being able to respond a little bit faster. One of the things that we did lose, we had John Cabellas, I might have said his last name correct. We had a contract with him to be able to respond on the island, or during and after a major event. He's since retired, fully retired, so we're looking to also see if we can contract with other individuals. But in the meantime, we're working on that truck to keep on the island. We're also, I've also spoken to town officials, if there is a true emergency, to be able to get on a boat, to get out here fast. We're still gonna use the ferry as a primary means to get over here to the island, but we'll definitely, we won't exhaust every single possibility to make sure we get on the island as quickly as we can. I think it's the same challenge that first responders have, at least with fire, same with us at National Grid. But at the same time, I think Operations and National Grid leadership have taken the right steps with respect to the truck, equipment, to really make sure that we're better prepared to respond a little bit faster. Yes?
In the area of the north end of the island, and the fact that those poles go through a marsh, and the fact that in a high-water event, which happens more and more frequently, sometimes that part of the island becomes its own island. Is there any thought to putting resources into burying the lines rather than having poles, where everything's ready to wash away and get knocked over and hit by trees and all of that?
You know what, that is, that is a great question, because when I first came into the company twelve years ago as a design engineer, and actually, I had to go to Mass, I'm a renowned, I had to go to Mass for this first year, but anyway. That was the first question I asked, why can't we add everything in the ground? Number one is cost. It's just a huge cost to underground.
Yeah, we're always fixing it.
Yeah, it's, no, well, it's, it's a huge cost. Sometimes the locations actually are not conducive to actually burying the ground, or burying the lines. So it's a lot of different factors. But we, we are responsible, I believe even legally, to police cost of service, and that's pretty much why things are designed the way they are, easier. And, and I'll be honest, I've seen some towns, some areas, some municipalities where a lot of, a lot of the lines are on the ground, and actually, they're at the end of their life cycle, and it actually takes even longer to make repairs, find the issue, make repairs, to get customers back on. Believe it or not, it's, the overhead lines and assets are more susceptible to weather condition events, but at the same time, it is fast process to get out there and put things up. Not at the marsh, I think that's a different topic, with actually just being able to get out there and put the pole back up, but it is doable. A good question, that was, I wanted to see the first question I had when I first came to the company.
Hi, my name is Sue, I live in the north end. A month and a half ago, we made a call, you know, from National Grid. So I said, a Harper, Arbus, come down and do some tree training. She actually has a line coming from your pole to her house, and a tree has actually begun to bring it down. So it could become detached from her house. So anyway, I have some issues too, not as bad as her. I called a month ago, and they said, Arbus would be calling our number, and I've had no response. I can see now why, maybe because of all the storms that are going on throughout the country, though, I have not gotten response, but we haven't.
Can I take, can I take on your information on your address later on? I can definitely follow up with the Porsche supervisor, see if he's aware of it, and what the plans are.
I have one more. A year or so ago, I called, and I heard a question, is somebody to check out a telephone pole? We have a transformer on top of it, and it's one of those thin poles, and it's starting to do more things. And they were gonna respond, and they were gonna...
I'll do the same, I'll do the same information. Yes, sir.
I live in Massachusetts, and it's an electricity company for a competitor. We pay a small fee monthly to foster energy conservation. Does NetGrid have that same function in Rhode Island?
I'm not familiar with that, I have a little...
Because what, what can happen in Massachusetts is that you can have an energy audit made, and as part of that, you will be given a certain number of LED light bulbs and so forth. If you have a program like that, that would do a couple of things. It's a proactive program, program that people would have to opt into and, you know, get involved in. It cuts their electricity use, therefore, their bill. It cuts your need to buy electricity, thereby your costs. And it would do a small part to reduce the load that people extract from your electric system.
No, that's a great point, that actually does add, everything does add up. We do have a similar program, on the energy, there's a, part of your bill that's a, part that you get for energy efficiency, which goes into some of the programs where we actually come home, we actually visit your home, do an energy audit, change all the lights, light bulbs there for free to LED lights, and give you a report of different improvements that you can do to your home to make it more efficient, energy efficient. And it'll actually link and give you information on different programs, rebates, interest-free loans and so forth, on installation, and other programs out there. That is, that is there, it's in our, our main website, and I can always pass along that information to town council. I don't have it at the top of my head, but I can get that for us right away.
I recommend that anybody who has a house down here, get rid of your residents, get rid of your incandescents, and go straight to LEDs. They're safe.
No, and if I, if I give you that number, will be able to pass it along to the residents?
It can be done through the commission, yes.
Yeah, commission of the residents. There's a Prudence Island Facebook page, and Happy has a last email.
It'll be out there probably later today. It'll be out there probably later today.
I'm new to the island, so forgive me, I'm a new resident, but I believe there's a windmill in Portsmouth. Is that a conversation that's ever happened here, speaking of conservation and renewable options?
That would be a conversation for the residents and for, for the town itself. We don't, we don't, um, we're a distribution company, so we don't own any generation, we don't get, uh, where we get involved is through the studies of inter, the interconnection agreements with the developers and the different cities and towns and customers that wanna either solar panels, PV stations, uh, wind farms, whatever it is. We get involved to that capacity, but nothing beyond that. So that would be a conversation for the residents, if that would be something you would ever want to entertain.
Is that something that's happening? I don't know who to address that question.
In terms of building a winter gone, or solar panel?
Solar, or, yeah.
Solar has been discussed in the past. One site that was thought about was the, the old dump site, because it just basically sits there, just feeling long, I think. I believe it's, I think, I don't know, Rich, do it. I thought there was one time somebody mentioned building a turbine out here, but never came to fruition.
Yeah, it's, uh, there is a developer who is interested in, uh, multiple sites around Rhode Island, Prudence Island being one of them. Uh, I don't know where that's gone. Uh, I anticipate that we'll hear more in the next year. But I do know that Prudence is one of the sites that they're looking at. There's, there's a lot that goes into the city. You have to have the infrastructure that can support it, the FAA has to approve it, so on and so forth, but it is being looked at.
Am I correct that one of the windows we see is in Portsmouth, the town of Portsmouth?
It's, it's, the one you can see right up, right up here, but it's not owned by Portsmouth. I mean, it feeds the grid.
But it's the town, was it, so the town wasn't part of that process, that the developers were coming in?
That's a very long story. Oh, I wanna hear it.
In a nutshell, yes, the town put one up, it broke, we leased it away and backed out, the developer replaced it.
Okay.
And we're not gonna go any further than that.
Thank you. We all wanna go home sometime, too.
Right, right. But I, I do wonder if that's, if that's something that could get fogged up, like, conversational a little bit because of some self-sufficiency.
My guess would be, be, be more appropriate to have solar out here than a winter, I would look, yes, it is a conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, again, I have, uh, it's, uh, I'm somewhat the messenger, but not really in the sense that I am comfortable. This is my area, um, East Baker, in Portsmouth, Prudence Island. But at that, again, I wanna give a lot of credit to operations, engineering and design for really pushing, getting out the capacitor banks, and then also for the voltage regulator, you'll see them out there next week, and also making those decisions to get the truck out here and really making sure that we have the capability to respond to the residents on the island. Again, any issues come up in your services, whatever may be, please call it into the 800 number, so there's an official record of it. Um, and then if need be, Rich Rayner has me on speed dial, so does Brian, that Gmail, everybody. So in the sense of, if you need anything, just communicate and then just, they'll get ahold of me and I'll definitely respond and get you the answers that you need. Any other questions, comments?
Is there a hazard mitigation plan for Prudence Island that's in writing, or is it just...
Fine hazard mitigation plan, just that emergency response plan?
Well, so, yeah, when you have a big storm and the wind on the storm, you guys have, you know, SOPs and operating...
We, we, yeah, we have, we, uh, we file the, uh, F1 on an annual basis, emergency response plan, that pretty much covers as encompassed as all of Rhode Island, and that's one for electric and with gas.
That would be your online?
Um, while that's more internal than I'm aware, outside, that's a different story. I haven't been asked that before. Any other questions or...
Can I, do you sense, do you have your comment to expand on this?
Okay.
Thank you. I know you want to say yes.
When all of this started, uh, way back last July, and we got this whole thing rolling, um, and that is what brought Mr. Alfonso into what we're doing here today. Um, thank you very much to Representative Donovan for her quick response with the Legislative Affairs Committee, who very rapidly had, um, the PUC's, um, top dog in, um, electrical engineering and all sorts of stuff like that, Mr. Schilling, Joe Schilling. Uh, he could not be here today, but I do have a handful of his cards. He's very much open to hearing directly from you, and I'm sure this guy would rather have you talk to that guy on a regular basis.
You know what, it's, again, for me talking to National Grid, if you have a specific issue concerning the liability, call 800 number please, make sure there's a record of it. Um, as, as more, whether it's individual level, as a whole community level, if there's an issue, again, I, I respond to all the town officials, any of the questions that they have that need. I, I've dealt with Mr. Schilling before, uh, the state constituents' offices, again, with respect to the town administrator, Mr. Rayner, the constituents' office, and then also the division, they all contacted me just about the same time with this issue. So your voices were heard. Um, we also heard internists, I believe some of you did contact, and locally we know a lot of what's going on here too, because I think it's a small, it's not even three degrees of separation. I think we, some of our linemen have some family here and friends, so everybody talks, everybody knows what's going on. So, but we're here to help. So if you feel you have to go to the division, the PUC, the state constituents' office, whatever may be, that's your right, please do so, but please notify us to give us that chance to respond and do the right thing.
Absolutely, and I'm not trying to...
No, 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 absolutely, no, no, that's, that's great point.
It was very nice, I thought it was really good that, uh, Mr. Schilling was so forthcoming and his willingness to be available to the general public, and I can tell you from my own personal experience, working with Administrator Rayner, as well as Mr. Alfonso, these folks have been incredibly responsive, as you've heard here today, so I'm really thrilled. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for having me.
All right. New business number three. Prudence Island Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I think you guys took a control burn sometime in the May timeframe, is that right? April, May?
The days blend together, but, uh, somewhere around there, May, June.
I only know that since I was going over to the fourth grid and I saw a big fire down south of the island. Called the chief and he said, "No, I don't think it's supposed to be doing that."
Good afternoon or morning, folks. My name is Only Knight, Forest Fire Program Director with, uh, DM in Division of Forest Environment. Um, and a number of years ago, I believe it was around 2014, we initiated this wildfire risk reduction project here on the island. Um, this project, uh, was to write the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which, uh, has just been finalized, um, and it's a tool for you folks. Uh, the reason we started doing this project out here is more or less a fair, mutual aid and normal tactics that are associated with tanker shuttles and all the other, uh, normal tactics, uh, just won't work here because of that terror, that the logistical component. So, a little bit about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. What this is, is basically the documentation of, and the finding of, and the documentation of, uh, the goals and priorities of the fire department, community members and the other partners in this program. The intent of doing that is to potentially open up some other funding avenues to try to meet those goals and priorities. With that, I turn it over to Alex Entrop, sorry, Alex Entrop, uh, from Northeast Forest Fire Management, who we contracted to write the plan. Uh, we'll give you a kind of a brief overview, and, uh, it is available, and I, I do request and urge you folks to check it out on members' website. Um, there's a one sheet, uh, kind of quick explanation what's in it, but...
Thanks, Mr. Knight. So, yeah, I encourage everybody to pick up one of these. If you don't, it's just a one pager that describes a little bit of, of what is a Community Wildfire Protection Plan and what are some of the recommendations that this plan has , we collect this. So, you know, starting with it, it's, I hope everybody will go download it, it's on the Nevner website, as, uh, Mr. Knight had said. Uh, it's a lot bigger than we can cover in a few minutes here, but, uh, we can hit on some of the highlights. Importantly is to think of it not just as a plan, but a process. So, um, part of writing plan was to get the input from the community members, so that's the fire department. Mr. Knight on the fire department came up with a lot of the recommendations and needs for the fire department. We worked with, um, Rob Weber from Nevner and Only here, and really the job of us as a consulting company was to get all of that information together, to do some of the kind of modeling and to get the plan in the right format. So, the purpose of the plan is to inform the community, um, on the hazards of living in the wildland urban interface. So that's the area where we have a lot of wilderness or, or wildland fuels out here on Prudence Island that have the ability to have some pretty severe fire. When you combine that with the location of Prudence Island, remoteness, um, then you have a response issue that's gonna be, could, could be pretty difficult to tackle. So, you know, there's, uh, a small department here that does a great job, but they, really, to be honest, the apparatus is very, it's, it's aged, probably needs to be replaced. You have, um, you know, and you also have the, the type of, uh, topography here, you know, and, uh, the amount of woods, trying to get these big trucks through wooded areas, trying to get them into protect buildings, especially in winter when it's wet. So there's a little bit of a mismatch there. So one of the things we talk about is trying to, um, build, uh, a better response capability. So, part of that's gonna be the equipment, part of that's gonna be the mutual aid response. So, um, you know, there's, uh, getting, getting equipment in from the mainland's gonna require coming in on the ferry. Other than that, it's gonna be fireboats coming in. It's not an ideal situation when you have what could be a pretty large wildland fire ring through. So, um, the other, uh, the other issue we really address is the water supply on the island. So, you know, as everyone knows, uh, the water's based off of the cistern system, there's a few cisterns and the fire department's able to tap into those and pump water. A lot of the people, uh, living on the island are not within sort of a pumping distance, and so those have to be shuttled. And that's really a very intricate dance of equipment, moving this water around and having to pump out, and can create a pretty, uh, long time having to run back and fill. Uh, so there's a definite need for an improvement in the water infrastructure out here. So there's a number of recommendations related to, uh, cisterns and such in the plan. Some of the other recommendations of the plan is, is related to training. Uh, everyone's been through the, uh, you know, regular structural fire, uh, firefighting through the state, but, um, you know, there's a need for some training in wildland methods. So, uh, that's part for the fire department, but also for the mutual aid that would be responding, that may not be familiar with wildland fire suppression techniques. There's also, you know, a need for developing, um, SOPs and all of that to, to formalize some of the, um, to formalize some of the, um, responses that would be going on through mutual aid. One of the things that we did through this is to model potential fire behavior across the island. So, but that involved was looking at vegetation, to classify it into different fuel types, and then to write it through a program, um, using some federal data, uh, topography and all of that, and looking at potential, uh, fire behavior. So, what we really found is that there's a potential here for, uh, pretty fast moving fires. So within, potentially a couple hours, you could have a large fire move basically from one end of the island to the other. Uh, and in, in that amount of time, it, you know, you're really looking at how's that response gonna be able to happen, um, with the resources that are here. So, um, so that, so it really kind of narrows down our response time to looking at what can we do in a short amount of time. So, you know, the, the plan itself is, uh, it's written in a way that's supposed to be for anybody in the community to be able to pick up. It's not necessarily a very technically written document, although it contains a lot of, of complex modeling and technical information, but it's gonna be something that anybody can, is, is gonna be able to pick up and read. So, one of the things that, uh, it addresses is what individual homeowners are gonna be able to do on their land. So, you know, a lot of the way that these fires are gonna start from, from burning through the woods, it's gonna be, a lot of embers coming down, embers are gonna be falling, um, into areas near the houses, um, you know, to, uh, you know, wood piles, mulch, things like that. So there's a lot of information in here that the homeowners can use, but also it has some recommendations in here about with, uh, Mr. Knight's program coming out and doing assessments on individuals' properties, helping them guide, helping to create, uh, a, uh, helping to create individual plans that can help make the community more resilient. In addition to just working around the individuals', uh, structures, there's also a lot of recommendations in about strategic areas on the island where if you had a wildland fire moving through, you could do some, uh, removing of the understory vegetation or some mowings, some improvement that could help, uh, reduce the flame lengths, reduce the speed the fire's able to move through, and get the fire to sort of a more manageable, um, manageable levels that the fire department can get in. Some of the specific recommendations we had to assist with, uh, the, to assist firefighting in the woods would be, one is to improve the heritage trail. Right now, there's a heritage trail that runs north, south. Uh, with a little bit of improvement, that can be accessed by, uh, basically a wildland fire engine, you know, pickup truck with maybe 200, 300 gallons on it, and that would give the ability to be able to suppress fire before it got big. Additionally, under, uh, emergency situation, they'd be able to, uh, you know, where water levels are up, blocking off portions of the island, you could use that as an emergency route to move through the island. We also talked about some, uh, you know, there's probably a need for individual landowners to be able to do some of these firewise recommendations where they'd be, um, you know, removing hazardous fuel that's near to their house. Well, some of those houses are, you know, it's, uh, wilderness land or, or wildlands, and there, there's probably a need to come up with some sort of process that they could be able to, still within, while, being able to, uh, follow conservation objectives, still be able to do some of that hazardous radiation, um, in, in a way that, uh, in a way that's gonna maintain the conservation, but also be able to protect the house. So we don't give a process, but we recommend that there be some sort of process could be made for that. You know, you talked about apparatus and replacing, really what type of apparatus, what you had is instead of having these, um, you know, typical, you know, type one large fire engines, to be able to switch to something that's more four-wheel drive, that's smaller, more agile, but to be able to both get in, uh, under difficult snowy conditions, be able to get in around people's houses, uh, but also be able to fight the wildland fuel. And so, island like Nantucket, they've switched over to this sort of an engine, and, um, you know, we hope that over time we'd be able to get this, get Prudence Island itself to have some sort of a similar fleet. So, um, I, you know, I struggle to try to cover everything that can be covered in this plan, but in the end, I hope everybody takes a chance to look it over, to read the document. Um, it's, the document belongs to the community and it's supposed to be kept alive, it's supposed to be used, and, um, so, uh, I would encourage everybody to take a look at it and hopefully, as, uh, Mr. Knight said, it can also be used as a platform to make grants, to make requests for equipment, make requests for improvements to the water supply, um, because this, this sort of document, uh, does hold a lot of water with, you know, the Forest Service and some other agencies that are interested in protecting communities, but they need to see that there's been some thought put in ahead of time.
So, give five minutes for questions, real quick, if anybody has anything, otherwise we'll be floating around afterwards, but we can definitely get into the, into the weeds, so.
I just make a comment, the little surveys that they did and the tax you dropped off at our house, they were really well done, so thank you for that.
So, part of what we did is, is a, uh, a home assessment. Um, it's a very fairly quick one, it's not quantitative, um, like most of the ones around the country are. This is just strictly, we want the homeowner to wear school, we want the homeowner to see how a firefighter, trained firefighter, and a wildland, whatever, they're faced tactics is gonna do to your house, and make some basic recommendations on what they can do to protect their house. We are nearing completion of that, we've still got a few more days, and then hopefully we'll have, uh, done everybody's house and community. Um, it's just, basically it's a prevention thing, so, you know, uh, hopefully a fire can be useful and a good one.
Just a question. Has this been given to the person with the town health, or have they, uh, did you read it?
Um, I'm not sure they have. Uh, so it's been posted online?
Yes, it included as part of our agenda package, it's available for anybody to read it, and I'm sure that's also online.
I think in dealing with budgets in Rhode Island, to have a prospective on the fire department, we have it out here, et cetera, so I'm not just out of clue. But we talk about being able, having a fire situation on the whole island under two or three hours. It puts a... It puts a visceral sort of field. Our engines are beyond 15 years and supposed to be recycled. And to others who are very much conservancy oriented, et cetera, the idea of broadening trails doesn't sound initially good. But in the context of being able to fight fires, keep your land, it might make more sense. So I would really strongly recommend that you do read it.
Yeah, and so there are a number of recommendations we made throughout this plan. And most of those are just to be a catalyst for conversations and spur for plans and kind of bring folks to the table and develop partnerships. So that's, I hope you guys find this to be a really useful tool to use. Any other questions?
Thank you both, very much. New business number four, everybody's favorite conversation, trash.
How's it doing everyone? I just want to touch upon a few things. I know there's been a lot of change on the transfer station over at Prudence, with the new compactors and also with the CMP container and with the page of road maps. So the first thing I want to talk about is the leaf drop-off. I know we used to have a leaf drop-off up at the top, it was open all the time. The problem was we were having a little bit of, we were having people dump more than just leaves. They were dumping out garbage and construction debris and all that. So we had to close that section off. So now the leaf debris is going to be, it's in the transfer station. I've already seen that, so it's just, let's just monitor it a little bit better. So if we do see a bad one, we'll be able to take it out and replace it. So that's one of the big changes. Number two, the mattresses.
Are you taking questions at the end?
I will, yep. The mattresses and lock springs, we used to be $50, it's been bumped up to $70. Our resource recovery has increased that cost everywhere, not just Prudence, they increase it on the course of the site too. So sorry to hear, sorry to tell you, but that's the cost. I mean, if you think your mattress is in good shape, if you want to bring it over to the mainland, please call beforehand, you can probably drop it off for free, as long as it's not soiled and it's in good condition, it's not wet. It's kind of a hard situation with that. And the last thing I wanted to tell everyone about too is we had Eco Depot here last year, household hazards waste. Our resource recovery, Eco Depot's actually had a lot of reductions in their plans. So they've cut out, also cut out horsemen. So they've cut out 18 communities over, oh, eight communities, I'm sorry, all together. So they've downsized. I'm going, I'll leave a couple flyers in the back right there. There are different locations coming up, this timid in, Chris already went by, I'm sorry about that. There's one in New York, there's a few other close ones here if you do have household hazards waste. Now I'll leave the flyers back there as their schedules on all the offices. And I'll leave another camp back there too. Recycling, 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 I always want recycling. So I have a low three-page thing, it has some helpful hints, you know, to maximize your recycling, what, you know, what we accept, what we don't accept. So I'll leave that in the back also too. So that's all I have.
So the challenge in the fall is usually after Columbus Day, the hours of the transfer station are two hours Saturday and two hours Sunday, which is not sufficient to take care of your leaves.
I understand.
So the, so the question is, what, what accommodation will there be to be able to get rid of leaves?
We're going to have to try to do it during Saturday and Sunday.
Well, understood, but, you know, if we do leaves, we'll do leaves for eight or nine hours in a day. And, and I, so I don't have any, I don't have any way to compact that into two hours and heaven forbid it rains, you know. So we just, we need, we need some additional availability. I don't think we want to start putting them in bags and...
We don't want that.
Okay, good, I don't, I don't want any of that. But, you know, so, so then we need, we need additional hours at the transfer station for it to be open to be able to, if it's going to be restricted to that, you know, to that location.
I'll check with our guys on the island and see if they have a solution to move it to. I understand, I understand it, but when we, when we start having people just dumping garbage and stuff like that, it's making our guys even work even harder for any, for any of that garbage.
Not appropriate, no question, but, but two hours, four hours a week is, is not going to cut it for, for being able to legitimately take care of your leaves. You're going to find leaves in places where they don't belong.
But then we come to a problem too. If we open a transfer station up longer, you know, during the week or something like that, or a different time, people, we have it on this side too, people want to drop off more than just leaves. They want to drop off leaves, they want to drop off garbage, they want to drop off recyclables. And if everything's closed, it's very hard to do that, so we'll, we'll take a look at it.
And particularly, you know, other weekends, you just, you need more time. If that, if that's going to be the only, the only way to be able to do it, you need more time.
Yes. I thought the breakdown in the leaf dump was when we were told that brush could be accepted at the leaf dump as well. I thought when originally it was great for going in and getting decomposted leaves for your garden and stuff like that, and we all were very respectful. I think then the board... Well, I wonder if you could open that up during this peak leaf season when there's not a lot of activity out here and there's just a few homes that are trying to get good maintenance.
At the lower section or the upper section?
At the leaf dump.
No, no.
That's what we were going to call it.
You might have a problem now. A lot of people have left. So odds are that you've got less people this year.
It may be a seasonal problem.
Yes.
This is on the subject of the trash bag, the orange trash bag.
Yep.
Why are they so expensive? Why do they have to be printed on? And why does our lorry have to order so many at a time in order to place an order?
I'm not sure about lorry placing with weed zero. They're orange, they had to have our seal on it because people can cheat and go on Amazon buy orange bags. So that's the reason why we're trying to keep that money into the town because we get a percentage of that sale of those orange bags back in town that offset the sticker costs.
But why are they so expensive?
That is to set off the sticker costs.
It's the cost of getting rid of trash.
But we're paying to get dump sticker, then we have to pay for the trash.
We all are, we all are. If you're using the transfer station here or the transfer station in Portland, everybody pays for it. And the cost for the Prudence Island transfer station is being offset through taxes as opposed to on the island, which is not, which is...
But you're making money off of that.
We're not making any money at all. It goes to pay to get the trash off the island. It's not a money-making function.
As far as the cost of the bags is concerned, again, I live in Massachusetts and our town went to a PAYT program in 2001. And we spent, there's a committee of eight people, two and a half years implementing the policy. Like you, we have two size bags. The bags cover most of the costs. We have to use an enterprise fund to fund our recycling and trash collection program. It's everything we have to take us out to Milbury. Two bucks for a large bag isn't a lot of money, quite frankly. Tipping fees are pretty high and they're going up. So it's just the reality of life. Trash, MSW is a real big problem for all towns and all states in this country. So it's something we have to look at.
The cost of us taking trash to Rydak is, that's the numbers. It was 37 bucks a ton and went to 47. Now it's 149 or 54. It's going up every year. The dunk in Johnston is getting closer and closer to having to close. So we encourage more and more recycling, they're charging us more and more money to make sure that people are taking your can in. And if you look at our recycling rates, ever since we went to orange bags, it has gone from 21% to almost 47.
And it's going to go higher.
Two, two points. First, the town makes no money on the bags whatsoever. All of that money that is brought in, the revenue from the bags goes into an enterprise fund, which helps lower the sticker fee. And then the second thing is, the higher our recycling goes, it has gone through the roof relative to where it used to be when, since we've instituted the page through a program. That also helps offset the sticker price because we don't have to pay a tipping fee on the recyclable material.
So are you telling me that about 5.5 cents to haul that for you guys? So if it's 25 pounds goes in a big bag today, right?
Big bags, 33.
25, that's the largest, the largest one I just got at the store, it's at 25 pounds. So they... 33 gallons. Okay, whatever you want, so the mine's at 25. So if you do the math, that's about eight cents per, per ton. If you're, say the tipping fee is $50 per ton, that's two and a half cents. So that means it's costing you guys five and a half cents.
No, because you have to, we have to add in.
Well, no, I'm saying somewhere there's the, I, I, somewhere there's a delta of what you guys, cost you guys to haul a ton of trash. Is the tipping fee, salary and all that, what is that number?
For Prudence Island?
I don't care if it's Prudence, I don't care if it's thing. I don't, I pay one tax rate, I don't care if there's seven different ways that you guys want to sort of slice it, but if Prudence is a different thing, that's fine.
It is.
But what is, what is the rate for Prudence and what is the rate for Portland?
Prudence, we pay $400 for the ferry. Round trip, we pay $625 just to haul the can off. Then we have to pay the tip fees on top of that.
So yeah, so you guys must know what it is per ton of the haul.
And then after you pay, well, it's a combination of everything. Because this is put back into the town budget and then you have the enterprise that will set off for Portland, so it's two different breakdowns.
It'd be nice to know what that is, just for hand, and then other, other things on the, on the construction and debris stuff. So first of all, I can, right now, for me, I can bring it four days a week. And I've been doing it four days a week for about two, three months because I've already filled up five or six or two or three of them. You're getting the trash anyway. You're getting it some way, somehow. If it takes me six months, you're getting it. Why can't you just let me bring as much as I want per month?
State terms of...
If I get four days a week...
Because you get into it, if you, if you're allowed to bring as much as you want...
No, no, I didn't say that.
Or you just said...
I said, no.
You just said, why can't I bring as much as I want?
No, I said four times, four times a week.
You said, why can't I just bring as much as I want? All right. It helps to avoid us or you, both sides, from supporting contractors who should be buying a dumpster when they come out here to remodel a house or building.
But it's probably a different kind of readout. We don't have that many hundred. There's a very few number, okay? So you're getting it from me no matter what. If it takes me 10 weeks, you're getting it. So it doesn't really help you at all, to be honest with you, from a, from a person. I have a building, blah, 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 and I'm in force to take one barrel or equivalent, whatever that means, to the dump.
And am I, if I did something at my house?
Yeah, but you, it's a little bit different for you, right? Because your fee, your fee to get a dumpster at your house is half the cost of what my fee is. And that's, that's my problem, that's my problem. But I'm just saying, why don't you just say, okay, I get 40, 40 trips per month, cards, punch, 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 140, I'm done for that.
You have, you would have to take, you have the ability to fill up 40, 32-gallon trash barrels with construction debris?
Well, when you take off shingles in your house and they weigh nothing, yes. Okay, and I've done it. And they weigh nothing, that's another one that you guys don't kind of put in there. I can throw in a 32-gallon thing of shingles, which weighs four pounds, or I can put in 100 pounds of cement. It doesn't really matter, right? I don't understand why you just don't let us, maybe on Prudence Island...
It's to avoid contractors.
And we don't have that in the out here.
Understood.
So you made rules on the other side and you just rolled them over to here, that's what I'm just saying. You didn't, the, the language has no change whatsoever, except for the hours.
Correct. If I want to bring everything to the garbage bin one day, it'd charge me $75 for a pickup truck. If I don't...
If you don't go to the pickup truck, what do you do? There you go, so, so there's another added body.
I understand, I have an option to pay for a pickup truck, which you don't. But you could own a pickup. They can still pay $75 for a pickup truck.
Oh, yeah, if you own, if you own. But why would you do that? I mean, just do, I can throw it away in the garbage.
It's a pickup truck, I thought it was another $75 for 32 gallons.
No, it's 70 for a... And they don't even say how big, because it's a pickup truck, you could have it up to, you know, as much as you want. I'm just saying, I think you guys, you looked, you took the transfer station rules and you really rolled them over without any thought, okay? Because it's pretty easy to add in. I don't understand why you can't say, people on Prudence Island, get a punch, punch it, let me punch it, when I'm done for the month, I'm done for the month. Do four times, four times four, 16. If I do it all in one week, I'm done. It isn't fair to my neighbors. They see, they see piles of garbage in my backyard, right? That were waiting to go.
They're going to fuck you up.
Right, exactly, there you go. I just don't, I think that if, I mean, I, I don't mean to get in for you, but you guys don't ever bring on Prudence Island at all when you make these things. And I listen to the tapes, guys, okay?
I would disagree with that pretty heavily.
Well, then you can show me which ones to use. Because I know, I know for the trash ones you did at the end because it went from, it used to be an enterprise fund and now it's not because it wasn't being funded. That's the last time I ever heard the trash control. When you made rules, no. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, hi. We saw the garbage issues on the island, it's probably been the southern of the Navy Base, and we're checking out the bunkers down there. And some of the bunkers have been broken into and people are putting their garbage in there. There was a boat worker in there, et cetera. Who was in charge of making sure those bunkers are secure?
EDM, it's our DM, Robbie.
Also, oh, the Corset Press recently, I think two weeks ago, had an article about how great we're doing on recycling in the town of Corset. That's wonderful. But they also mentioned that the town of Corset, the mainland, will be having a special collection of hard plastic items. And there was another item also that was mentioned that had a collection at some other time during the year. If we don't get those special collections over here from the island, how can that be...
You're, you're able to go into the mainland if you want to do the...
It's $60, it's $60.
I understand. It's $60 box up and bring it over there.
I don't hit the same services.
So I don't have to bring over a truck and trailer over there. So it's, it's not really cost usable to bring over a truck and trailer to...
Speaking of recycling, is there, is it possible to get just a recycling sticker? If that's all you do? Rather than, because if that doesn't cost money, it makes money. I would just be very interested in recycling.
It doesn't necessarily make money, it costs less to give it a recycling.
So it costs less, but if you're just, what I'm doing, this is being really...
It becomes a, an issue of being able to release that in terms of what sticker do you put on here? And have a guy actually follow you over, make sure you're not throwing out... The sticker, basically the sticker pays for your recycling. The removal of your trash is paid for by the bags. So yes, a possible recycling sticker is the recycling sticker.
Then one thing I might assert, some of these problems might be, it might be useful to phrase these questions to Ray Antet and Ted Heats of the Solid Waste Committee because they are considering revamping rules for the town, or at least, you know, suggesting revamping for the town as well as for Prudence Island. David and I are liaisons to the committee. So they do, you know, they put together the study looking at how should we collect trash and, you know, the main department of Portland, when they're willing with the changes that are being made to the transfer station. So I think these issues are quite, you know, would be very useful to raise with them. So I'd urge you to do that.
Could those people come to the island to talk to us?
I could talk to them. The bridge goes all over the place. That's a lot of time at the transfer station.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Sure.
I know it sounds silly, but I think the town is really known for recycling.
By Rydak, if they're, if they're soiled, paper towels, yes, they're not recyclable.
I think that might be, that might be one of the questions that are in the form, I'll look it up.
Paper towels and paper cloths.
If, if they've been soiled, they're, they're not recyclable.
Anything that has, anything that's been soiled, it's not washing.
The question is, how soil is soil? I, I, unfortunately, yeah.
The question is, how soil the soil, I, I, unfortunately, yeah.
Yes.
This pertains to the annual fireman's fair, and I don't know how much, but HIC, they took this year not being able to have furniture as cars were sale in the auction. Because nothing could be larger than to fit in a hole in the transfer station device. And since it is a fundraiser that benefits everybody on the island and relieves the town of having to come up with the money some other way out. I, I, I don't know all the mechanics of it, but it just seems odd to me. I lived in London for a long time and you were allowed by the council of one or two or three special pickups a year as a homeowner in that area. And I would think in the case of the fireman's fair, the town could have a special pickup for the furniture that doesn't get sold. So that the event can go on as it has for decades and, and hopefully prevent the tossing of unwanted furniture into the woods or into the bunkers down at the resort. I just, I don't understand why there isn't some provision for that. I know it's expensive, but, you know, the mon, they typically raise, what, fifteen thousand a year? And I don't, or, I don't know how much of a HIC you guys took, oh, it's more like twenty-four thousand a year?
It's twenty-four, and then with the cost of having to pay for a, um, I mean, a dumpster. I think they net, yourself, was seventeen was about what we ended up with.
It's just something the town council and the Department of Public Works ought to consider under these particular circumstances. It has had a really devastating effect on that one particular event that benefits everybody in the community. And actually relieves the town of a certain burden, financial burden.
I, I, I don't know if I'll be able to answer that, I mean, if social media, and, and put social media out there too, for, you know, used furniture and stuff like that, so, I mean, that's like the biggest thing. Because that's why we don't allow that down the transfer station right now, that pick and pull pile, so. I always say, if you put it on social media, that's the best way to get rid of it, because it does cost a lot of money.
Well, I mean.
I mean, unless you're gonna throw it away, and if you're gonna throw it away, then you can fit it in there. I mean, if you were to throw it away in a couch, it didn't fit in there, you put it inside, it won't take care of it, won't break it up and throw it in a pouch.
Well, they, okay, in the typical case, you get, say, of somebody gets divorced, they're selling their house, furnished or not, the new homeowner doesn't want the furniture. They'd like to give it to the fireman's fair, and now they can't. It's perfectly good stuff.
I don't know anything about the fireman's fair.
Anyway, it's just, I, I was just a little upset about that whole issue and the fact that, um, they were forced not to take a large portion of what they made from it.
Yeah.
I think maybe one of the points Sean's making is that, you know, perhaps Portsmouth, if we can't do that, if Portsmouth could help us out financially with, um, some kind of disposal dumpster or, or some kind of way to dispose of that, um, that would be helpful. Since we had to pay for it and it did come out of, um, the funds. So if that's something that Portsmouth could entertain, that would probably be helpful.
Anything else?
Well, thank you very much.
Let's start New Business Five, we're gonna have a discussion on the medical emergency distribution point for dispensing of bags.
Thank you. I'm Mike Rich Phillips, and I'm the town's medical emergency distribution system coordinator. Now, the system is designed to provide medication on a mass basis to all our citizens in the event of a mass medical emergency, like the anthrax attack or something like that. Uh, the National Centers for Disease Control has stockpiles of certain vaccines, antitoxins, in secret locations around the United States ready to deploy to communities around the United States in the event of some type of emergency. Uh, it's managed by the Rodon Department of Health, and the program is, when it's activated, it's free to the public. When you come to get your distribution of your medications, no residency is required, no identification required. The key is to get as many people through the process as possible. The funding for the program is provided, is provided by the federal and state resources, and it's based on us doing particular exercises and briefings throughout the year. And in, in fact, the, the, since you are here, we're doing a briefing, you're worth six hundred and seventy-five dollars to the town. On the program, so thank you. Uh, we've gotten about ten thousand dollars in the last three years, and if we complete all our deliverables this year, we'll give forty-three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, when, uh, one of these emergencies is announced by the Department of Health, we're given between six and twelve hours to set up what is known as a point of dispensing. Now, our normal point of dispensing is at Portsmouth High School, but we do have the option to have alternate points of dispensing, and we're gonna design one for Prudence Island. So that means that we will set one up here in the Indian Church, and all the people in Prudence Island, when the, the center opens, can come through, get their medication, get medication for their families, go, and we'll be done. You won't have to go over to Portsmouth High School. Now. Part of the plan is that we'll establish that, that point of distribution, and we'll arrange for the Rodon Department of Health to bring the medications here. We'll have a few public officials to be able to help us dispense those, but largely it's a volunteer effort, we need volunteers to help. No medical training is required for you to be a volunteer. A lot of it is to fill out paper and sign people in and sign them out. Uh, if you have medical training, it helps us out, but there's no requirement for medical training. One of the beauties of the volunteer program is if you're one of the volunteers, you and your family get ahead of the line privileges and you get through the system first. So, if you can help out, please, uh, let me know, I have some sign-in sheets. One of the things I have to do to get my six hundred and seventy-five dollars is to have a sign-in sheet. Part of the bureaucracy. So if you can sign the sheet, and also on there is a checkbox, if you can be a volunteer, please let me know and I'll put you on the volunteer list. If you just want information, then also do that. And it's all achieved at the same. Thank you very much.
All right, so as you're filling that out, we come to New Business Six, which is always the fun portion of the show. The open forum. Now, Pat, you said you had one.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Does the pod have to be, is the pod would be here all the time, or the pod is shipped at kind of an emergency?
The, the pod is shipped, because we don't know what the particular emergency is, it's a national stockpile. Whenever it is, they'll say, this is the anthrax vaccine we have to give you, Department of Health can bring it here. And then we'll have six to twelve hours to set up, and then we have forty-eight hours to distribute it to the entire population.
And, and is this specific location felt to be the one, or is it gonna be someplace else on the island?
No, it's probably gonna right here.
And does it have to be a place with heat?
No, there are some requirements on the temperature of the vaccines, but I don't think we need heat.
Yeah, the sunny school home is heated all year round.
Got it, thank you.
I'll work with the, with the chief to figure out what the best place is for that. And you can also go to Portsmouth High School, the central place, they're not preventing from doing that, but we wanna make it easy for the people on Prudence.
Appreciate you.
Anybody else have questions for Rich? Sorry about that. Pat?
Yes, thank you.
Old business, are they new business?
Uh, old business and the new business. First of all, um, one thing I'd like to do personally, as the chairman of the planning section, is to make sure that you folks on the house understand why we're here. Our charter is to the town council to act as a liaison between you and them, and they with you. In other words, I'm picking up work for you from them, and I can handle it all the time. Which open up my hands up and all kinds of who knows what. But I just wanna make sure that you are, and also my own colleagues here, are very much aware of how much my relationship with our town administrator has been dramatically improved and simplified over the years. Rich always makes himself available to me via phone, email, his personal phone, at pretty much any time. Now, I'm very appreciative of that and I try to respect it as much as I can. But the fact that I can get a, a, a piece of action from one of my residents. Because I have that kind of relationship, whether it's walking into his office on an hour, so picking up the phone, um, I don't have to then bother our entire commission with a meeting. Sometimes maybe a special meeting depending on the urgency of the issue. So, I just wanna make sure that you all are aware of that, because it makes this council's job much easier, and it makes yours a whole lot easier because you're not having to deal with, with what are probably niggling kind of things when you've got bigger fish to fry. And it makes my job as having to administrate all that dramatically easier, and I'm really appreciative of that. And so I say all that just to let you know how much I think, uh, I know me personally, and I'm sure once my resident colleagues understand, the fact that you all saw fit to, um, reappoint or extend Mr. Reiner's contract for, I'm not sure how long, but, uh, he's still on the job, and I'm very much appreciative of that. And I hope you understand what you gained by doing that in addition, even though it was not necessarily a unanimous vote, the fact is, he's here. And I can, think I can speak for everybody on this island, we are very much appreciative of that. I don't know who to, and by the way, he had no idea what I was gonna do there. In our meeting here, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, there was an issue or a question raised during the session talking about the repairs, doing some repairs on the boat ramp north of the, uh, the dock over there, the same ramp that was used with all of the, uh, 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 loading of equipment and so forth with the road. That poor ramp, at the time it was addressed in two thousand and sixteen, uh, council or one of the town employees, I think it might have been, uh, former Mr. Woodhead or somebody from there said, yeah, you're right, we'll have to take, we think it's probably the EM that's responsible for that, we'll take a look at ramps or something to see what we can get that sorted out. Well, in the intervening two years, and the construction of now that it's answered out, and that ramp has really taken a beating. Add to that, then with the influx of a lot of additional residents or, or visitors bringing their own boats and so forth, and that ramp is getting quite a workup. So, it's at the point now where, um, I think it's safe to say, something's gotta be going, okay?
Trying to know, is that, is it our dock or is it the ramp?
I believe it's our dock. It's not a dock, it's a boat ramp. Okay, okay, good enough, thank you. Yeah, the concrete ramp just north of the new dock. Yep, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mike? So really, guys, I mean, I, I don't wanna. You guys have to start figuring out what it means for us to be part of Portsmouth. You don't really bring a lot of people on.
Mike, I hear you.
Michael's bringing up the, uh, the age-old argument that Prudence Island is a cash cow for Portsmouth. No, I did not say that, I did not say that. I'm, you're, you're just asking how we're gonna bring more of the people. I said, you just don't seem to be representing us. We don't, if you look at the issues we have, you guys cannot address them. Not because of your own fault, because the dock and everything else belongs someplace else. I just don't see what it means for us to be part of Portsmouth anymore. And that's just a discussion that someone should have, because if I was a resident of Bristol, I think my tax rate would be about this age. And I would get free parking for it. Like, I, I'm just saying, somehow that, that logjam between you and Bristol has come to an end. That there has to be another way in, that you have to say, you have to take care of these people for the benefit of the community. And I don't see that happening.
We have had multiple discussions.
Yeah, but it's a, so there's, so it's, it has to go to the next level then. I don't know what that next level is. And when you had Between Towns, I don't think there is a next level, it could be the, the two, the two people sitting next to you, right? But right at this point, you're telling me, I, I was just told two things that I didn't know, one, a windmill might be going there. And two.
Wait, Mr. Sheen, that, that, that's not true.
And two, well, that's for, if you said you've heard of it, we've never heard of it, okay?
There's a question.
I will table that one, I will, I will, I will table that one, because I take the other one for a while. And now I'm told there's no parking, we're back to zero. And there's, and we knew we addressed this two years ago and we got nowhere. And I was asked or talked to by the council president, who said, we have a ramp, we're gonna be doing the dock. We're gonna be happy to displace the people who are, have their yearly parking. I asked him, who said the representative, I actually asked him and/or the town administrator, county manager, and they tend to be on the opper, and have discussion, they said, correct. I didn't know what their plans are, I don't think they have a solid plan yet. But I didn't want anybody here to get a letter in mail in January saying, we're moving here across the street, we can do it all. So we have six months now to try and figure out another plan. The biggest part, problem down there, and you're all aware of it, is there just isn't any parking, period. And most of the parking is owned by one guy, who doesn't wanna deal with anyone, as, you know, as he said. And if you park up in the mud and then walk across the paved parking lot, he doesn't wanna open up a chain to do it. And he gives Bristol just as thick of a hard time as he gives us. When you saw what happened, right? Bristol got a million dollar grant somehow to fix, and claimed it was part of Prudence Ferry, whatever you wanna call it. Our ferry's running fine, it's been running fine since we fixed it. That million dollars is to make that thing look very nice, okay?
It's to build a marina, so it is.
Exactly. So first of all, the, the headline should be corrected, that didn't really help Prudence Ferry at all. The headline was to build a marina. And now those parking spots that used to belong to the residents are now getting to whoever, we don't need, they could be out of town people that buy the marina spot, right?
Could they?
Is that fair? No.
That was forced, if you listened to the conversation, that was forced on them by CRMC, who said if you wanna build a marina, you have to have some parking spaces for that. So.
The parking spaces could have been, I'm, I'm betting the parking spaces could have been across the street.
I, I will ask our state representatives to look at that, because that's, they deal with CRMC to see if there is an option.
Really, guys, what is it gonna be? I mean, it's just getting worse every year.
Should I, should, I, I, um, what I'd like to do is write down what exactly your questions are. I, I mean, you know, between Susan and I, we'll go run them down, you worried about parking?
We have no parking, as, as in our town, we're down to zero spots.
Okay.
That are available for the public. Okay? For anybody that wants to come out. My daughter wants to come, she's a parker.
I got, I got, I got the question.
That's, the parking is an issue.
We can take a look at that. I don't really know what the state can do, anything about municipal.
I'll look at the MRC, um.
Okay? Because I think somebody somewhere in the state house is gonna look at me and say, well, I, you know, I have to park when I go to a particular place somewhere around the state, okay? I don't really wanna get on that path and get into, uh, what you're responsible for paying for, depending upon where you live and what sort of access and need you have to park a vehicle somewhere. But I'll ask the question.
It'd be different if you can play five places to pay, would there be no place to even pay them, right?
Well, that's completely not true, because if the price was right, the other locked-up lot would be open and available. But see, it's a case of lots, who wants to lease that lot at Mr. Carey has required a lease on it?
I mean, am I correct in understanding that that lot is available for lease if you wanna pay the gentleman's price?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But it's, but it's, uh, it's exorbitant.
The respective towns have not been willing to meet that requirement.
And, and just getting back to, if we were Bristol, and I, I don't, I don't mean to say this is anything, I'm just saying, if we were Bristol residents, we would be treated differently.
What's your next concern?
Well, let's, let's, let's start with, the reality is that Prudence is not gonna become part of Bristol, okay? So let's start there, right?
But it might be an, it might be a viable alternative.
Sure, if, if Bristol wants to write a really big check to buy Prudence Island or the last.
Why wouldn't it? You'd have to pay check. So you're telling me we're a cash back?
I can go through the numbers again, we did it two years ago.
So it's just gonna get worse as time goes on, okay? That, that whole area is gonna be.
And, and the Bristol residents are having the same issues over there, and that's their biggest complaint about the new development I mentioned, is it's taking, they're cleaning out spaces. It's a, it's a reality in life that it just unfortunately, development happens.
So the power force within the interested in renting, uh, apartments, are you telling me that? That's the next question. Renting, leasing a parking lot.
Leasing a parking lot.
Depends on what the cost is. I mean, if we, if we lease a parking lot and we turn around and have to staff somebody to man, manage it, charge people to park there, is it, is it viable? I mean, fortunately, you mentioned that you're not gonna pay eighty-fifty, it's gonna be a little bit less, it's probably gonna be eighty-five, but it's gonna be less. What is, what is the cost benefit to, you know, I understand that you guys keep, everybody gets a continued parking, I mean, I, if I go to have dinner in Bristol, I have to park further away and walk because just, there's not a lot of parking. I, I don't know how to, short of knocking down houses, create more parking in Bristol. Again, one guy who has kind of an anomaly on it, and he's not.
Again, one guy who has kind of an anomaly on it, and he's not... Most of you know, the easiest person to deal with.
I just...
He knows his answer. He only showing that.
There's no solution that I see coming out of the town council at all. It didn't come out last time. Doesn't seem like it's come out this time, so...
We, until two hours ago, we didn't know what their plan was. So I don't know what solution you want me to come up with in two hours without having a conversation.
You guys could go in executive session for twenty minutes if you'd like, or we...
No, I'm just saying, again, it was just that we know that it's a problem. It's a continual problem, now it's even worse. I would say that's a, you know...
It is worse.
I can't believe they're only getting two spots, two handicapped spots, thirty-four spots. I think that's a little bit low from what I know.
I guess that the CRMC is gonna call it the...
Yeah, we're gonna be about ten there.
Can I say?
Sure.
So I'm a Bristol resident, obviously, and I also have a boat at the marina. And I'm friends with people who own businesses downtown. They're saying they're struggling because there's no parking. If you have guests coming to your home and you live in that area of where the ferry is, friends that come to visit you can't find parking spaces for, you know, two blocks away on Sundays. Even if you own a boat and you have a sticker on your car that says, "Marina parking," there's never any marina parking spaces. There's not enough parking for the people that even have boats there. And there is one a block away, the State Street Dock, if you're a resident of Bristol, you can get a sticker there. I don't know what kind of deal can be made. The man that we speak about holds the town hostage all the time.
Why couldn't Bristol, why couldn't you guys approach Bristol and let us give parking space to them? What is wrong with that saying, if you have an address on Prudence Island, there's a finite number of people, right? Why can't you guys subsidize parking or give us a parking sticker or have a limited lottery of parking stickers? Whatever you want.
That would be an action from the Bristol downtown. I'm gonna guess the answer would be no, but we'll ask the question.
I would guess it would be no too. So what is the solution going forward? We're just, it's just gonna get worse, right?
Yes. Because there's gonna be more development in Bristol.
So we're gonna wait for it to explode and then deal with it, just like...
No, we'll deal with it now, but if somebody comes along and decides that, hey, if a gentleman decides from Robin Robb decides to sell those two lots and make houses out of it or another business, that's his right. And that could happen. And then we're really looking at parking halfway across town and shuttle. I mean, it's, development's a reality and Bristol is a hopping downtown area, as you guys know. And they, the one main thing that they all talked about in keeping the ferry there is that everybody comes there, they stop in an A's and have a beer, they have a sandwich or whatever, wherever. They go up to pharmacy. Used to go to the pharmacy more than they do now. Now they're going to CVS, but... They love having the ferry there because it brings you food and stuff.
When they expand that arena, I don't know where the people are gonna park that have boats there, that will have boats there in the future. I just don't know.
And so that doesn't, from a state point of view, there isn't a parking thing that you, if you, your town has? Well, I guess not in New York City.
The state doesn't own it.
Well, that's where, that's why we're here because CRMC, CRMC said, "You're gonna have X number of slips in that marina, so you gotta use that parking." Now, did they say you have to provide parking and it couldn't be at Mount Hill High School? Could have. Bristol's decided that they want to use the lottery next to it. They could have said off-site parking for that, which would then lead to, Susan mentioned, people parking in front of people's houses and taking their boat out. Again, as you mentioned earlier, going further and further up the street, next thing you know, you're on that.
Yeah, and then later or not, sooner or later, you'll see that we'll be, we're probably in the real estate prices coming here, right? And it does for the town from that point of view, right?
I believe that was right. In terms of real estate, right?
You were giving a chat.
You have to do a study to see if the real estate prices are gonna be affected by lack of parking. Yes, sir?
I'm just wondering, in three to five years, this pulls up so badly, people in the town can't even find places and they literally, they can't park because there's no place to shop. Shopkeepers can't, in three to five years, why do we have to wait three to five years to grow up? Why do we have to be the Bristol Frederick? I mean, I know people like to be there as a nice place to shop, but why aren't we thinking ahead of time that we're trying to cram everybody into this one spot for now, knowing that in three to five years, it's gonna be so much worse? Who knows even what the solution is? Why spend all that money on the stop now? Why not put it into reviews somewhere else?
They're not spending money on the dock.
Well, Bristol's gonna do it, so...
Well, they're not spending money for the dock, they're spending money on the marina. But it's attached to the dock, so they need to sure up the sides of the docks. The west end where the ferry pulls into is solid now. Unfortunately, what that's attached to is falling apart, so they're gonna replace that piece and then rebuild the parking lot.
So it's just gonna be a band-aid for a little while? It's really not gonna affect the long-term solution for the project that the band-aid set right now?
In terms of the long-term viability of the ferry pulling in there or in terms of parking?
In terms of parking, you're in chaos, absolute chaos.
And it's gonna, as long as there's continual development down there, it's just gonna...
I can't imagine if very well, people are leaving the marina or coming to the marina, how that's even gonna work. Right? At least the parking, people are going in their parking spot, right? And then getting out. It's just gonna be...
So they're gonna hold it for a ferry time and have, and realize that they gotta wait twenty minutes until everybody blows the ferry.
So the only solution is to move the ferry out, to take the third or half of the chaos away and everybody's happy getting on the ferry and everybody's happy in town finding parking for the marina and chomping.
The only option for that would be to move the ferry to a location in Portsmouth.
Which has been addressed and...
Yep, that's the answer. Next.
Is there any possibility, I don't even know completely if it's possible, Portsmouth and Bristol paying that ridiculously exorbitant fee and splitting it with half of the parking for the marina and half of the parking to take the commitment to the Prudence Island residents that have parking?
Yes. The question is, what is that ridiculously exorbitant debt?
Hasn't he given a number?
I thought you said it was twenty-three thousand.
He's got, that's what they're charging him since right now to rent that lot just for the summer.
Oh.
For six months, I think he's had it once, so that's...
It fluctuates on his whim. He just...
He won't sign a contract, he knows he's got you, so, you know, if he had a bad-bad track, he's gonna start to...
I know he has issues with Bristol, has he, does he have issues with Portsmouth as well?
No, we don't, we don't rent or lease any of them.
It's not that one?
I just...
Half and half.
My guess is if you got into the mix, he had issues with Portsmouth too. I mean, that's just the way he is.
He would just see a bit more and just keep raising the price. Unfortunately. It's done. He owns that entire one. Yes, sir?
I don't even know what the rules are, but, you know, this is an increasing problem for two towns. Is there something that's fine and domain?
That would be a tough one to get through, eminent domain, right?
We have so much property there in building and...
Even with eminent domain, you gotta pay fair market value. So what's fair market value for an acre or an half of downtown Bristol? Again, I'm afraid.
Do you want?
What are we buying?
Robin Robb.
Yeah. Not buying the building, just the parking lot. What else, folks?
I was asking that there's a discussion about the short-term town ordinance, because I think a lot of people on the island aren't aware.
Can I hear you?
Fred's talking about the short-term rental ordinance, for lack of a better term, the Airbnb ordinance that goes into effect on twelve-thirty in one January first, I think, which has the effect of requiring you to register your property if you're doing short-term rentals under, somebody help me, because I can't remember, ninety days?
Thirty.
Thirty days. So if you're doing weekly rentals, even if it's weekly rentals that you've done to the same person for the past thirty years, they can offer you a house for July, the second week of July. You have to register with the town. It has to be inspected. Going through most of this stuff off the top of my head, so, you know, number of bedrooms, bedroom limit for people, so you can have two people per bedroom plus two additional people.
Who are related.
Right, who are related. So, hey, here's the reality. Gee, don't listen. You folks have been doing it out, this is more of an issue over on the mainland of Portsmouth, where people are renting out houses to, and I think it probably happens here sometimes, but as a community, you guys kind of lease yourselves. People are renting out houses to twenty or thirty people. Jazz festival weekend, folk festival weekend, you get twenty or thirty people in a five-bedroom house and it just becomes a party house, pickle bananas, and a... And you're trying to get a good night's sleep and it's just not gonna happen. Maybe you guys see that a little bit during hunting season or something like that when you have, you know, five, six people in a house and you get a little rowdy, but it's an issue. There are larger houses in the south end of Portsmouth where, quite literally, twenty or thirty people stay. People have taken a house that was legally three or four bedrooms and advertised it as ten-bedroom, unless they shove a couple of beds in a corner here or there. So it was made, it meant to address issues on the mainland, but we can't address issues on the mainland without addressing the entire island because it's just, it's not fair. If you've been renting your house, house to the same family and they bring in fifteen, twelve people to sleep in your four-bedroom house and they've been doing it for the past twenty years and all of a sudden, oh, look, somebody had a grandkid, now they got thirteen. Unless somebody in town, your neighbor comes by and knocks on the door or, as the age-old saying goes, drops a dime on you, don't worry about it. That's not my official opinion, but companion... Again, you wonderful people here on Prudence, lease yourselves. And if Johnny rents out the house and you know who Johnny is, you call Johnny's mom and say, "Hey, he's being an applehead." He gets a phone call from mom and he stops being an applehead. That's the way Prudence Island life is.
It also has, and there are some more dense areas in Portsmouth where there's limitations on parking, so if they're renting out and you've got, you know, six or eight people in a house and they show up and there's four cars in a two-car driveway, cars are parking in the streets, so it was causing, it was causing parking congestion, non-street parking issues in some of the more crowded areas of the town. So it's a multi-front ordinance to address, you know, the nuisances, the parking nuisances, noise issues in some of the more dense areas.
What steps is the town taking to make sure that we have equity amongst the different people that are renting their houses out?
In terms of, you know, everybody has to register their house if they rent...
How do people know they have to register their house?
Well, if you ordered states that if you're doing a short-term rental, you have to, you have to register.
What notification is going to the, to property owners that this applies to?
We don't know that you're doing it unless you tell us. The other avenue that we're pursuing is we will be putting out an RFP for some kind of a host compliance firm, which will monitor social media sites and allow, and alert us when there's a property that is up for short-term rental that is not in our registered, our registered debt.
I mean, I'm clearly associated with a real estate company, so we have every intention of registering.
He now knows.
You know, they...
There are companies out there that monitor Airbnb registration by owners and they can come back and say, "Hey, you have twenty-seven properties on Prudence Island that are short-term rentals. These are the people who are doing it. You gotta register those houses."
I just don't, I don't want to be a disadvantage if I'm following the laws and I've had an inspection and I'm, you know, I mean, the rules were pretty overwhelming as you, as you read through them in terms of, you know, how, and how it gets administered may be a little bit different than how it reads, but as you read it, it's, you know, and we're already in a situation where we have other regulations that I think not everybody follows and as somebody that follows the rules, you can be unfairly penalized in terms of competition. There's a lot of competition, people rent out their...
And unfortunately, it's always the people who follow the rules that get penalized because the people who don't. You know, it's awful. The people who brought this to a head were having major issues, like I said, literally twenty or thirty people staying in a house for a weekend, going to Newport and back on buses.
Bus pull up the house next to you and tell you what's going on.
That's a sign.
That's not gonna happen here.
It's difficult. And the same, as Mr. Aguirre mentioned, he'll take the area of island park which is very tight, six people rent the house and they all show up in their own car. They only have two spaces to park.
Or they're all gonna park in their own car here too because they have no place to park that they...
Bristol.
So honestly, we, we're having more people bring more cars for rentals just because they don't have a place to leave it, so...
And again, you have a special situation, at least in the mall here, unless a neighbor turns you in because somebody's parking on your lawn, it's not gonna be as strong as enforcement here as it will be on the other end.
You may want to tell them to slow down.
I do, all the time.
Sounds like it's a speeding issue.
Perhaps you may want to think about this agency, the third party that's monitoring social media, letting you know, hey, heads up to this question back here about unfair competition because one is by the rules, perhaps somebody else is not.
Well, when we, when they see, they'll check our registration against what they're seeing. So if they see your house on the market and you haven't registered, that's when they tell us and we come and see you.
Unless I'm using an alternative method of advertising. So I was about to say, maybe you might want to consider that this agency is made public as to who they are, maybe they have an anonymous, but fine, I just, and that would be...
He has an anonymous, it might be just, Fred's got his twenty-five houses out here and somebody else has ten houses and Fred's doing it the right way and somebody else is doing it the wrong way, it would be an anonymous, it would be a long call.
Call whom?
The zoning enforcement officer at that point in time.
You could obviously call the town, but most of these companies also have online presence, so you can just, you send them a tip, you can send them pictures, you can call them.
Making them public, I mean, I've never heard of that organization before.
Learning more about this than I ever thought.
Yeah, yeah. You're just getting started. The rules aren't even in the back.
Post-compliance is one of the organizations.
Post-compliance?
Post, post-compliance.
Compliance, okay.
Island justice.
This is...
I just want to point out that it's a bigger issue than just having a party house next to you. And I think nationwide, you're seeing that Airbnbs are just a really profitable investment for people. And what I was concerned about, in addition to what we've talked about already, is that if you have a $500,000 house and you're an out-of-state investor and you think you can swoop in there and make a ton of money, you're gonna outbid people who are to raise a family in that house. You just have more money and you're gonna turn it into a business. And I don't think that helps the quality of life in our town to encourage that kind of enterprise. So we had a choice between doing nothing or doing, you know, maybe way too much. And we're just starting to do something and I think it was important to send a message to out-of-state investors or people who are not looking at our town as you all look at the town, that we are not gonna let you just come in and do anything. And what we're starting to do now might be problematic, but that doesn't mean we can't tweak things as we go forward. So I'm hoping that this initial phase sends the right message to people of talking about things we can work it out. And I think there's so much history and knowledge and smartness in this room, I also would say that about the parking issue too. If we talk about it and talk about all the, you know, options we have and pros and cons and how we can get there, maybe a little bit more, maybe even as this gentleman might say, "There's nothing that's ever gonna happen." I have hope that things can happen because you guys are too smart to not let it happen, but we need to be communicating more. And it also, I would invite, I think every one of my colleagues would agree too, you don't have to just wait till we're here. We all have phones and we all have emails and, you know, we want to hear what your ideas are. We all have phones and we all have emails and, um, you know, we want to hear what your ideas are. And that committee, even on the trash, those guys meet once a month and they would love to have people who are more interested in the topic and really communicating their concerns, you know, in a rational and good way. So, guys, we can do this, we, we got this, but we do need to talk and, um, I hope that, you know, we'll continue to wanna be involved in having these conversations.
What else could we help you with, anything, as I was gonna say, on the state level?
Does anybody have a piece of legislation in mind that you'd like to see us push?
Just focus on getting your ass re-elected, okay?
You're welcome. Thank you for the other day, I did pretty well over here.
I got a few.
So, thanks for that.
Yeah, everything went well voting-wise? Jackie's here.
Thirty-two, nine hundred and seventy-nine. Good job. That's a primary, that's a primary.
What else could we help you with? You can't say lower my taxes, because, you know.
Alan needs one.
Law, but he's mine too. How big is your lawn?
It's smaller than you.
Oh, okay. I'll send Kevin right down.
Send a teenager over.
There you go.
What else, folks? Hopefully, we've addressed, Chief has addressed, you know, the, the issues, um, with coverage. And we'll definitely add some more presence down at the, the dock. Chief, would you like to say any words since you're, you're new?
Yes, I'd just like to do myself, my name's Donald Reddick, and I just was appointed as chief on September first and, uh, I'd just like to meet all of you after this is all over.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Did you hear that, that guy say they're gonna buy us all new fire trucks?
They're gonna report first. So, you folks, Prudence Island, how is your fire department as a new chief? We have a new chief, um, down in mainland, the main island, the main island.
The other one.
Hey.
Big eye.
The big island, big eye. Sounds like Hawaii.
Yeah, there you go.
Paul, who's our new chief over there, has a lot of, uh, good history of writing grants. Uh, I can tell you, we, we worked very hard to get a new fireboat grant, um, in this last round. And God forbid somehow a volunteer fire department in Bristol got one of we did. Uh, I, my suggestion is that Chief works with our chief to try and figure out a way to utilize the Prudence Island volunteer fire department because in the grant world, Prudence Island is still considered a rural community where Portsmouth proper is not. So, that might be an avenue. We know that our, that the fireboat is not in the great shape. It is in the process of trying to get a new one. We are not overlooking it, we're trying our darndest, but there are million bucks. So, um, we are working on it. If, uh, if there is ever an issue, as Chief mentioned, even with the, the curse of the movement, we have D E M, around state police, we have the first guard, we have mutual aid from East Province, War, um, I think, who else has fireboats? Newport, Newport's got a very new one. So, we have the capabilities to help come out here and fight a fire, we have capabilities to help on our armoires as well. So, you're not alone. Response time may not be as quick, but, um, you know, to go back to the, to firefighting, if the fire's big enough to race across the island in two hours, and there is not a firefighting crew in the world, it's gonna suck. If the Southwest lose a blow-in and the tinder gets up, run. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. But, working with D E M and, and helping to, to cut back some of that underbrush and, you know, maybe that all. Anything else before we go out and roll on?
Mr. President, I would just like to say thank you to all you that came out here today. We get beat up on the other side as well. And we can't please everybody in town, but we hear, we've heard what you said today and we will look into it. Everything was written up as discussion, you know, if there's something that you really feel is pressing that we've talked today, talked about today, email us, any of us, you can put it on the agenda, we'll, we'll talk further about it. On the issue of the transfer station, those gentlemen on the committee have really not been able to get together this summer, but we, we realize the rules that we put in place were gray and we're trying to put them in black and white, similar to what needs to be done for rules over here. That'll probably happen, as Linda alluded to, with Airbnb issues. You know, we put something out there to make improvements, they don't always work a hundred percent and we revamped them, okay? I think coming over here, I think Keith and I talked, we've probably done this five years in a row, if not six. We're hearing less from you, so I think we're doing some things right.
Absolutely.
And we're gonna continue to do that. All of us up for, for, for reelection and, uh, I don't know if I'll be back. I hope that people vote all of us back in, but it's certainly been a pleasure for me to come out here and do what I can on this town for the people of Prudence, and I wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Last call, anything else? Otherwise, we're gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.